Good afternoon, everyone. The hour of 5 o'clock having arrived Sacramento City Council will come to order. Ms. Concolino, if you would please call the role to establish a quorum.
It's Member Ashby, Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenier, Gara, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and this meeting is broadcast live this evening. There is a replay on Metro Cable Channel 14 Saturday at 7:00 PM. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. Speakers' slips are located on the back ledge. If you wish to speak, please complete one, turn it in to the Assistant Clerk at the front, and we also have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices should you need them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We begin with the pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask Emma Cannolo, who is a middle school student, whose mom is one of the graduates of the City Management Academy tonight, to please come out, and her brother, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, Lucas. Young man Lucas. They're friends, sorry, good friends. Sorry, Lucas, to come on up and help us.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Emma, thank you, and Lucas, not brother, thank you. Oh, that's, that is precious. Okay. We're going to begin with the special presentation without objection before the public comment. It's a nice thing to do here. We want to recognize the City Academy, City Management Academy graduation class, and I want to turn it over to, who's making this presentation?
Yvonne from the group that's supposed to come forward. There she is.
There she is, Yvonne. Would you like to introduce the graduates here so we can congratulate them?
I would. Thank you so much, Mayor. It is my pleasure to be with you this evening, Mayor and council members. As the mayor said, my name is Yvonne Reedlinger. I'm with the Department of Parks and Recreation in the Neighborhood Services Division. I need to thank a few people before I present the class, if I may. I would like to thank people who helped make this city management a success, and they are Christina Pallone, who is our division interim manager, Chris Wimberly, which many of you know. Chris did all of the pre-work, which allowed me to then implement the program, Heather Hochstra, who is our other analyst in Neighborhood Services, who filled in for me when I needed to have a couple of days off, Carmen Herrera and Selena Robertson, who were my right hand and my left hand. They took care of dinner every single week, they checked in everyone, they made sure everyone was accounted for, and they held my hand when I needed to have my hand held. So they totally spoiled me, and I need to thank them for that. And I need to thank city staff. If it wasn't for the city staff, the department directors and the division managers of this great city that we work in and live in, who actually do presentations, we had a class that ran for 15 weeks, which is the longest class we've ever had, and we have 39 students who've actually completed the class coursework. And lastly, I need to thank the alumni. We have a number of alumni members who come back and help us do interviews, who actually serve as facilitators and co-facilitators, and just basically take care of the CMA class. So I'd like to talk a little bit, just quickly, about Neighborhood Services in the City Management Academy. I'd like to tell you that we've been doing this particular bread and butter, steak and potatoes for Neighborhood Services for over 20 years. Just in the last seven years alone, I can tell you that we had over 230 people that have graduated from CMA, which is quite astonishing, because we're asking them to go back out into the community and volunteer. We're very selfish in terms of Neighborhood Services. I warned them all in the very first class and said, "You're here for selfish reasons for Neighborhood Services. We need to get you back out in the community." And all 39 of these people are committed, and I'm looking forward to working with them. They're all energetic and raring to go. So with that, before we go any further, I'd like to have them stand up and show you how many are here this evening with us. Not everyone could be here.
Going to introduce everybody, Yvonne?
Well, actually, why don't you start? Chenier?
Do I go?
Go.
All right, one at a time.
How are you guys doing? Shinon Rhodes, District 8, South Side Pride.
Welcome. Come on, one at a, come on. Chris Cooper, District 8. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Lucero Serrano, District 6.
Welcome.
Trine Williams, District 5.
Congratulations. Judah Dwight, District 1. All right. Keep going.
Arthur Bingwater, I'm hoping to particularly be of service to people with autism in this community.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next.
Luciana Dimskey, District 9, Syracuse Vista.
County of Sacramento. Business of Sacramento.
Wow. Threw me for a minute.
Anna Sutel Belling, Sac County, District 3.
Lynette Edwards, District 1.
Welcome.
Terry Smith Canelo, District 9, Sacramento County.
Congrats, congrats.
Good evening. Francine Renata, District 6.
Jason Orta, District 6. Thank you.
Adipalumi Clements, Archegonsoye, District 7.
Look at that.
Good evening. Deborah Thomas Smith, District 5.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Francis Wezar, District 3.
Linda Eng, District 7.
Yay. Dave Bonaccorso, District 3.
Evening. Will Kennedy, Pocket Area, District 7.
Will, thank you.
Sharon Wright, District 2, Roba Park.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Adrian Renn, District 5.
Thank you, Adrian.
Suzie Vang, District 7.
Congratulations.
Alejandro Cabrera, living in the county and also district rep for District 6.
Alejandro, congratulations.
Erica Castillo, District 7 and 8.
Oh, congratulations.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers Tristan Brown, District 7. Thanks.
Dimitri Getimane, District 4.
Andrea Lynch, District 2.
Congratulations.
Pat Sandlin, District 3.
Arthur Bingwater, I did not say District 4, but it is District 4.
Mariana Batiste, District 8.
Well, let us, I really, I think it's important that, you know, we recognize each of you individually, because you all have something unique to offer to our city. And to make the commitment to 15 weeks shows an incredible commitment and care for the community that you call home. And we hope that you will continue to be leaders, whether it's as appointed officials, whether it's elected officials, whether it is serving in the myriad of ways that you can serve in this community. I've always said about Sacramento, this is a place where if you choose to get involved and you choose to get engaged, you can make any difference that you choose to make. And so this is terrific. I wish I had done this before. I ran for office the first time, but I didn't. Very, very happy and pleased. Let's hear from a couple of members of the City Council, and then we'll move to public comment. Councilmember Getta.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And again, it's a great congratulations to all of the candidates here. It's great to see a couple of good friends out there from District 6 and from around the city, Jason Orta and other Francines out there. And I know we have Barbara Steinberg coming in here at some point, but, and also a big congratulations that I'd like to give to my own staff member, Alejandro Cabrera, who was out there pitching the academy to people to participate, and then realized, well, maybe I should figure out what I'm pitching as well and how great it is. And, but more importantly, you guys are leaders out there, and when we want to talk to our community about how our city functions and helping us out here on the dais and in our offices, you guys help expand that. And I know we all have different communities, and I know Lucero's out there, you know, talking to a variety of parts of our community, and everyone else has their different pockets of the city, but this is a bigger way for us to help our neighbors and our public understand how our city functions and how they can get involved too. So a big round of applause, congratulations to everybody. Let's give them a hand for their congratulations.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm three for three. I see I've got three graduates for District 3, and I'm proud of all of you. Thank you for taking your time. I especially want to give a shout out to Francis Wezar and Pat Sandlin. They're two of my favorite constituents from South Natomas who've already been a big help to me on various issues in South Natomas. They already give back to their community, and now armed with this knowledge, I think you're going to be even more effective. So I'm really proud of you and look forward to seeing you soon. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. I did do the academy, and in 2006 graduated, just like the rest of you. And I learned a lot, and it's been part of why I've been able to be successful as a City Councilmember. So regardless of what you do, I think the mayor said, "You should, you should run, you should serve, be on commissions, get engaged." I hope you know that this is going to make a difference in how well you can do. So thank you for your time, and I hope to see somebody who up here one day.
Super. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted, we had a couple of people that were acknowledged or came up and are graduates of the academy from District 2, but I also wanted to acknowledge, there were a couple of other people that were in the academy. One was Kathy Anuzik, who texted me and said she couldn't be here because she was in London, she went to London to visit her son. And I also believe Jane McCauley was part of, was Jane part of this class? She wasn't? Okay, maybe she'll be in the next one then, so. But again, congratulations to all of you, and also specifically with extra emphasis on the District 2 participants. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. So I heard you say that there are 230 graduates that have gone through this program. Is that correct?
In the last seven years, yes.
Last seven years. So my congratulations to each one of you who are graduating today. You join a unique group of leaders who have decided they want to make a difference in the community that they live in. And so what I would encourage you is, as you've made this decision over the last 15 weeks to participate in this academy, is to make sure that you contact your council member, find out where you can take your leadership abilities, and find out where you can serve, and make sure that the 15-week investment that you made becomes a lifelong investment of making a difference in the city that we all love so much. My congratulations to each and every one of you, and I look forward to working with you as we lead Sacramento to greatness.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couldn't agree with Councilmember Jennings more. Now that you've made this investment, you need to get with your council offices, make sure they have your contact information, and make sure you get involved in helping to run your districts. People ask me often, "How do you get to be a City Councilmember?" You just can't do it walking off the street. You have to get involved. You have to do something. You have to make a difference in your community and learn about your community. And I hope that all of you would take your experience, the experience that you have gained, the things that you have learned, put them to use in your districts, and help your council members run their districts, and help the city become a better place to live. Congratulations. Thanks a lot. Nice to see the folks from District 8, too.
That's great. Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. Obviously, we're all super proud of the folks from our district, and I am too. For the District 1 folks, good job, way to go. But also, I think it's really great, you know, there's more than one way to advocate. Sometimes people become subject matter experts, sometimes, you know, people show up at council a lot, but one way, another way to advocate is to really be, become an expert on how it works, how the city process works. And then you can interject your voice at different times in the process, whether that's through a council member, or through the Planning Commission, or the Parks Commission, and now you know that. And so you'll be able to help other people be really effective so that, you know, it kind of helps resolve frustrations that people have when they feel like, you know, they're not being heard, but sometimes they're not coming at it in the most effective way, and you all are experts in those areas now. The other thing I noticed tonight that is really cool is that there's a lot of family members in the room. You're all family members. I see somebody back there with flowers, and I see lots of kids and husbands and wives. It's a big commitment. For 15 weeks, that's a big commitment, and I, not only am I grateful that you all made that big commitment, but that your families did too, and that they're here supporting you. One of my favorite moms in Natomas is in the room for her son here. Yes, Chris, she's awesome. So my point is just, you help us by also showing your families how important this is, and your kids, and your parents, and your siblings, and whatever, and that helps us do a better job serving the city. So thank you all so much for the commitment, and to the family members. Thanks for loaning your loved ones to us for 15 weeks.
Well said by everybody, and since nobody spoke on behalf of District 9, I should just, well, we're all, you know, I think it's important symbolism, that, you know, boundaries and borders have their place, but in some sense, they matter less, because we're all together, city and county, when it comes to our opportunities and our challenges. And I think it's really good that we reach out beyond our city to include representatives of the county as well. So great night. Thank you for helping us get a great start to our meeting.
If you could just indulge me a few more moments, Mayor. The class actually does have a representative from the class that they elected. There were seven people who came forward, and Danny Yost represents the class, and he just has a few things he'd like to say, if we may.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
Two minutes. No, just can't.
Sorry, Mayor and councilmembers, I was stuck at work, as is often the case for so many of us, and we really appreciate this opportunity that you've given us today. And I just want to give you a little bit of perspective of who we are, the program's success, and the accolades for the staff and people involved. We have such a diversity of people here today, and it is, you know, such an amazing view of Sacramento, and shows just how much of an integrated city we are. And you have your usual suspects, the neighborhood leaders, legislative advocates like myself, the business professionals, state workers, county workers, but you also have local sport coaches, the caretaker for the giant chicken on N Street in Midtown, university staff, medical professionals, a social worker, freelance writer, a full-time mom of six, including a rocket engineer, who were all homeschooled, a community organizer in the American Corps, and Pastor Judah Dwight Sanders spreading the word that God freaking adores you. So you have such a diversity of talent here, and we were influenced so much at CMA because of the knowledge that has been infused, the bonds we have formed with our fellow neighbors, with the city leaders, on how we can strategize and make better our city and do things together more efficiently, how we can encourage people to organize communities in Greenhaven, downtown, and make other communities more strong, and how we can inspire service to adults with disabilities like autism. These are a few of the things that people are working on here. And we did a little survey of people. The CMA this year got 4.2 out of 5 stars by the class of 2017. One half found it very helpful, and one third found it tremendously helpful. So you can see how important this program really is to your city leaders in the communities. And above all else, it really, what we think we gained, and what we think we're contributing, is a city of true partnership, especially with our surrounding communities, Mayor. And we want to recognize just a few folks. The partnership of the Neighborhood Services Division, obviously Yvonne, and many others who were involved with this, from Christina Pallone, Laquisha Beckham, Maria Vitus Metal, Year Lee, Heather Hochstra, Carmen Herrera, Suzie Vang, and of course, Chris Wimberly. There's no way that this program would not have happened without these amazing city staff. And we also want to recognize some top presenters. In fact, we want to present an award tonight to the best presenter and to four other top presenters. Gina Knapp, manager of the Front Street Animal Shelter, just shows how you go above and beyond in city service. Literally jumping out of a plane for her program for cats and dogs. It's amazing what she has done. We also want to thank so much the other presenters, especially Howard Chan, our city manager, Shirley Concolino, hopefully I got that right, our city clerk, Chris Conlin, the department director for Parks and Recreation, and Matthew Boyer, the general manager of the Sacramento Convention Center complex. These folks, among so many of the other presenters, gave, you know, with such an outstanding presentation to us, and just left such an amazing impression upon everybody. And just, we want to wrap up by thanking you for the support of our program. We're committed to the continued success of this academy, so what's to come? Jason Orta in the audience here today is leading the formation of a more formal alumni association across all the classes, so that we can continue building the network, to reach deeper in the communities, to help each other grow more, and with further support, the city support of this academy. And to my fellow graduates, I challenge each and every one of us that what we have learned and people we have met, that we would serve and educate the underserved, underrepresented, and underprivileged communities and people in our lives. This is a quote, little paraphrased from my fellow graduate, Chris Cooper. Good night and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you for that excellent presentation. I want to thank the tremendous city staff, the people that really put this on, and the folks who present as well. You get a real sense of dedicated public service and public service. I just, but the last thing you said just reminds me, as a final thought, don't forget that you have the ability to organize and to be constructive advocates and voices as a group before this body, or any body within the city, county, and state. And don't underestimate your ability to so organize and to effect change here right at your city. Okay, I may regret saying that, but that's, but that's the truth. We now move on to public comment, which of course, we now take at the beginning of our city council meeting. We have a number of people signed up. Let's begin.
Okay, so we'll call three at a time. We'll start with James Clark, David Andre, Richard Wake, and then Macworthy.
If you don't mind, I'll wait till they finish leaving. Is that okay?
What's that?
Is it okay if I wait till they finish leaving?
Yeah, of course. Let's wait till the, till we clear.
No, I would love if they stayed. More people that don't care what the public council says. 13. So I heard last week that the anti-camping ordinance was supposed to be on the agenda tonight. During the meeting, it was stated as such, and once again, we still don't see that, or not the anti-camping ordinance, sorry, the tent city, was going to be on the agenda tonight, and it's not. I'm kind of disappointed by that. Once again, it feels like we're being gaslighted, and the cans getting pushed further down the road while people are dying in the street. I'm fairly upset by this. You know, we're 30 years now. People have been asking for a tent city and fighting against this anti-camping ordinance that you, Mr. Mayor, yourself said was inhumane and unconstitutional, but are now doing nothing to address now that you are the mayor. And finally, we get one person standing up and saying, "Hey, let's at least try out the tent city for a little while." And it just keeps getting put off, and put off, and put off. In the meantime, all the winter shelters have been closed already. We have new information stating that there's over 13,000 homeless in Sacramento County, with the highest proportion of those being in the city. And I just continue seeing more and more stalling, more and more stall tactics, and then efforts like the new time period to silence the public. I'm wondering what the city's commitment is, and why there's no explanation of why everything keeps getting postponed, no explanation on why you feel that it's necessary to silence the working-class individuals that like to come and speak about a multitude of issues, not just homelessness. It could be an issue in their community, it could be police brutality, it could be a new water pump thing that they want to address in their community, but now that they can't get off work in time, they can't get here to address the council about their concerns. We really would like you to readdress this new time period, as well as repeal the camping ordinance, and explain to us why Warren's proposal keeps getting put off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And again, it's not my practice, as you know, to respond to public comment. It is public comment, but I do think that the speaker asked a reasonable question, and Councilmember Warren and I did talk along with Councilmember Ashby, and I know Councilmember Harris has been involved in some discussions as well. I would like to state what our intent is. We are taking Councilmember Warren's proposal very seriously. We still have some things to work on. Specifically, we are still evaluating respective sites, and secondly, we are still looking at the specifics around budget, and what it would take to experiment with this one form of shelter. Not shelter, this one form of addressing homelessness. At the same time, we are preparing, and our staff is preparing, for an emergency shelter workshop, and finally, we are awaiting word from the federal government about our hopeful receipt, our awarding of the Whole Person Care Grant, which will amount to $64 million over four years, to address not only emergency shelter, but comprehensive continuum of care for people who are out on the streets. And so it's our intent to try to have all of those discussions, including action, together on those topics, over the next week or two. We are awaiting word on the Whole Person Care Grant, and we still have work to do on Councilmember Warren's proposal, in addition to providing complementary alternatives, not juxtaposition, but complementary alternatives around emergency shelter. So in the next week or two, we will be ready to come to council, I hope, with a series of actions that will provide not only a long-term plan, but shorter-term relief. That is our intent. Okay? Thank you.
Hey, David.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council. We need a tent city now. I need a tent city. Right now, is one of the homeless people here in town, and watching other people go through this stuff, and sometimes I get to bring you, and you get to see it in my face, since you see me so much here. What you do to homeless people, this is a boot. A lock on a vehicle that a person lives in. Your city's doing that to people who are registered homeless with loaves and fishes, people who has asked the city and the county for help, and you continue to hold things against them. You continue to criminalize people. This happens to be me, I can prove it. Give people tickets after the people already do community service, and then with some kind of a meeting you have with the county, the county ends up getting a cut, and it goes to revenue reimbursements. Had a good article in S and R a couple months ago about the $100,000 homeless man. Getting there. Now you have a boot on my vehicle, and I, but way before you did thus, I talked to you about doing that to people. And I, but way before you did thus, I talked to you about doing that to people. You need to stop doing this to people. This makes people further down the line from getting help and doing stuff and being protective members of the community. If they have a vehicle to live in, that's good. I mean, applaud that. You know, good. They have a, you know, they can, they can do things. They still have to move the vehicle around, of course, and all this and that. I'm not saying they're going to park into somebody's front lawn, but people are living in their vehicles, and this type of stuff here is pushing them further down the ladder towards death.
Well, thank you. I mean, if you want to share this with one of our staff members, we're happy to look into it.
Yes, I am.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you.
Be happy to look into it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Richard Wake, Sacramento City Council, District Five. I'm glad, Mayor Steinberg, that you gave an explanation, because there was a lot of confusion. So, when I spoke to Councilmember Warren's office today, and last week, I forget the staff member I spoke to last week, but when I spoke to Daniel Zavala today, he said that the reason the homeless shelter was put off was because it was going to be combined in a vote. He one-hundred percent guaranteed on, on the next city council meeting on Tuesday that everything was going to come to a vote. That's what he said. I even posted that on Facebook, because I spent about an hour on the phone at lunch today. So, I'm just wondering, you know, if we, if this information could be shared a little bit more publicly as to why things are being delayed, I think that would reduce some of the tensions, perhaps. You know, I know things, you know, I know you guys have to meet and work things out, I think everybody gets that, but maybe a little bit more public sharing of information in regards to this issue, and maybe others would help reduce some of the things. My other point would be, you know, I've been paying attention to this issue now for, for several months now. One of the reasons is because I have a homeless, a friend of mine is homeless now, but staying at Volunteers of America, a college buddy of mine, that has a bachelor's degree in Communication Studies and was illegally fired from the franchise tax board. So, I'm really paying attention to stuff, but, you know, one of the things, you know, we had a lot of nice people here to finish the academy, but there are a lot of other heroes in Sacramento too, especially Armando Flores and Kimberly Church, that are working out here to feed the homeless people. So, just to kind of make, extend some olive branches here, when this finally comes to a vote, I would just maybe recommend, maybe, you know, all, many times the issues of the homeless are last on the agenda, we're here late, and we're here late anyways, how about putting them first on the agenda this time? Extend some olive branches to some of these people, and I think that this issue would probably be resolved a little bit more, you know, you know, easily and more thoughtfully if that was done. Thank you.
Good suggestions, Mr. Wake. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mac Worthy, and then Mr. Lavinovich, and then Robert Copeland, and Nikki Jones.
Good afternoon, people. You should be awarding the homeless people, they are doing your job. What they have brought here in front of the city council, you supposed to be in the neighborhood, walking the precincts, getting that information yourself, by meeting the neighbor, but you wasn't. What were you doing? And we are looking at the, waiting on a grant. Now, I told Dale, the only thing he could, he could do when he come in here is a grant and a bond. Now, you're homeless waiting on, now it's, California got twelve percent of the population of America, but three, three thousand and some people is homeless here, and you waiting on a grant from the United States government. What are you doing to the people? They brought money in here. If you're going to have an academy here, teach them something instead of encourage them to go along with your nonsense. Now, the budget hearing, you had eight of them. Dale, if you tell the people the truth, you may have some people attend those things. Now, it wasn't no hundreds of people attend those eight budget hearings. It was not a hundred. You're lucky to have had four hundred people. Would you become mad with four hundred people? No. So, don't come in here and lie, and your other people here sit there and know he is lying, and this, that, or the other. People, when we saying for two years, I've come in here and tried to show you speak, have people to come here and speak to what's on the agenda. Where's the academy? What did you teach them? They can't speak to what's on the agenda? I've been coming here almost three years, and the only person, I have went to organization, puts up on paper so people can go down there and speak to what's on the agenda, people. This stuff can be appealed in a law court. I can testify under oath of what I said here over three years, but can you, under oath? This is no hearing, this is a rubber stamp. Tell the people the truth. This academy don't mean nothing. Where's those jobs? How many people can go get a job on that piece of paper? Nobody. You got to be able to think outside the box. These people, investment, did you teach them anything about investment? Nobody come in here and say a word about investment.
Yes, sir. You're next.
I can't get into my emails, so I can't finish the speech on black engineers at UC Davis. But it's good that the new time is at, it should be at four, after six, if you have the, the starting time at 6:00 PM, the buses run less frequently after six, and I get home at ten or eleven, I got to waste money on Uber or a taxi. And if you guys start at four o'clock instead of five, instead of five, you guys would, the city council will get home early and can get some sleep. Okay, so I want to talk about the homelessness. I know this guy who be walking in front of my house, I don't know, two, three, or four years, I talk to him occasionally, nice guy. Across the street from me, there's a policeman next door, they sell drugs, she's done nothing, so she's on the take. There's ten to twenty homeless living in the garage across from my street, across from my house. I let the guy sleep, ran out to shed to him, I forget the negotiation, twenty-five cents or a dollar a day, I forget. Then he saves some money, buys a large tent, he's camping in my backyard. Then he has two people sleeping in his tent, two people sleeping in the shed, male and female. And I noticed people are sleeping on my front grass, because I saw the grass was flattened, if grass was three or four feet high, I didn't get around to cutting it. So, I'm thinking of preparing three areas in the front grass where they can sleep there. I'm thinking of buying outhouses, because I found fecal material in my garbage can, and I did not enjoy washing it out with soap. And this morning, I had three homeless in my house at five in the morning, in the breakfast area, dining room area. And I'm wondering, did any of you, Daryl Steinberg, Mayor Steinberg, have you had a homeless in your house once a month for breakfast? That'd be a mitzvah, no?
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
You hit two minutes already?
Yes, sir.
Oh. I had a little bit more, but, okay, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Make the meeting at four.
Robert Copeland. And then Nikki.
Well, if you're camping in my backyard, is that a, against the law?
And then Trina Allen.
Robert?
I want to talk about Sacramento as a world-class city. Your definition and my definition of world-class city are two different things. We didn't need to spend a few hundred million dollars on that UFO-looking building called the Golden One Center. We need more housing now. Jobs, where, where are they? I'm, I'm beginning to think, Mac Worthy's right on a lot of his stuff. Not all of it, I don't support Trump, but a lot of the other stuff, he says he's dead on, right. And as far as downtown Sacramento area, it's a disastrous area. Places are boarded up, empty, like the Greyhound bus station. What are you going to do with that building? And a Tempton J, a lot of that's empty. Why? Why not invest in something there? Can you tell me why those areas are empty? For years. This, this Sacramento County is a joke, and I was born in Sacramento, and I say it's a joke. How many of you were born in Sacramento, like me? I was born at a Southern Memorial. Now, that's demolished. Why? Sacramento County City Council is a joke, and some of you should be replaced, including my city council member. Thank you.
I don't know how this is going to work, but I'm going to go ahead, I just want to go way back in time to my first-ever visit to you folks here at council. It was March of 2012. Some of you guys were here, some of you were not, maybe Angela Cashby. At that time, public comment was three minutes, so go ahead and forgive me.
Nikki?
All right. Thanks, Mr. Grant. Nikki, and then Susan.
See, I, I tried to save this time by walking down first, but now it's like the time of me walking down.
I heard what I can only imagine is a wonderful man tell of the hundreds of homeless in Sacramento that are turned away nightly from brimming shelters. And I heard the city council respond with an anecdotal account of a personal congregation's potentially monthly free dinner. While that is appreciated and encouraged, I hope that the council realizes we are not exactly here to hear what your church is doing. We are here to hear what the city, the elected representatives of the people are doing for all types of people. But what I've realized is that this is not always where that information can be gleaned. It is accumulated as I walk past empty blocks, empty buildings, yesterday's empty promises of prosperity for all. It builds and weighs me down as I hear an officer of the law wake a homeless man with the information that he can't have a sleeping bed because of Occupy. So remiss of this council telling me as an occupier that I can't have one because of the homeless. So what and who, in fact, is it because of that on a winter night, those desperate enough to be outside, whether due to poverty or personal conviction, or likely both, are denied warmth? City manager Shirley Sacramento, who has decided this as good governance? Who and when and behind what closed doors with no windows did Sacramento decide to cut down trees and trash the property of humans whose intention was just to find such?
Thank you, Nikki. Okay.
Been a long time, and things haven't changed. We just, we are here still.
Thank you, Nikki.
Hopes that things change for our friends who live outside, for our friends who deal with the, the way that the city decides to govern and police its people. You guys, just take it into consideration. Think about how long, how long people have suffered under your thumb. Honestly.
Trina? Trina Allen. Following Trina Allen is Janet Fricki, Eric Frame, Tom Dupree, and Rhonda Gann.
Five years, and that was terrifyingly, terrifyingly relevant. From imperialism to colonization to slavery to Jim Crow to redlining to gentrification to poverty and homelessness to the prison industrial complex, it all starts with what white supremacy does best: theft. We steal what isn't ours through law enforcement terror and legitimize our actions through deals, codes, ordinances, and laws from councils like this. Take the Triangle District. It was a black neighborhood where folks predominantly rented or owned high-interest loans due to institutionalized racism and redlining. Street and state violence were high in line with poverty until you sold it to developers. Now, white folks walk to the wonderful shops and community activities that were never supported before, and longtime locals can neither afford or participate in. Law enforcement is now moving en masse into the underdeveloped South Oak Park where I live. Every day on my way home from work, I see Sac sheriffs or Sac PD detain my neighbors, both housed and unhoused, and push them out without rent-sized ticket or the threat of arrest. You may not want to admit to yourselves or to the public how your officers treat folks in distress, but poverty and unacceptable housing aren't the only type of theft in Sacramento. You steal community members. Black bodies lay bleeding in the streets, killed on our diamond, you do nothing about it. How dare members of this diocese participate in a ceremony of valor for the officers that gunned down Dejean Fournou, and never once demanded dismissal or indictment of the officers that illegally detained him, taunted him, and terrorized him? Officer Fong called him a freak and told a community member to hit him in the head with a baseball bat. Officer Tennis, who had Joseph Mann with his car, and laughed about it before by dissecting his body with bullets. And now Officer Figueroa, who choked and beat Nandy Kane Jr. for walking while black in an area that you want to gentrify. It is clear that you feel uncomfortable with us calling your officers murderers. But until you take immediate and public action against their behavior, before the next body falls, they won't be the only ones with that moniker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you can bear with me for a moment, I'm going to go back to the 1980s. I owned a catering business, and I wanted it to be successful, so I made sure that I never ran out of food. So, with never running out of food, I always had food left over. So, I thought, okay, I don't want to throw away good food. I called the Salvation Army, and they gave me their phone number, and whether it was one in the morning, three in the morning, I had their back number, and I would call, and they would unlock the gate, and I would bring the food in. And the guests could wake up and have fresh food, they would prepare. Coming to today, Scott's on the River. The owner is a very nice man. They don't keep their food for the next day. They were giving their food to homeless people, and they were asked to stop. The owner did not want to throw the good, healthy food in the garbage, and he continued to feed the folks who are homeless. He got a letter stating if he continued, it was either twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars was going to be his fine if he didn't start throwing his very good, healthy, nutritious food in the garbage versus giving it to hungry people that don't have the money. I'm going to be finishing up. This is something to bring, to think about for next Tuesday with the anti-camping, with giving a little bit of respite to nonprofit and churches, also to restaurants, grocery stores, and catering businesses that, that want to help.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Last week, you guys mentioned you want Sacramento to be a destination city. How are you going to make it a destination city with thirteen thousand people homeless roaming the streets? Going to be tough. Why would they want to stay and check out the city when there's so much suffering in Could at least provide public bathrooms. That seems like a city thing, city thing to provide public bathrooms. I know you took away some public bathrooms, so give them back, please, to the people. You also mentioned having eight million dollars that you have no idea what to do with. This was after the twenty million dollar surplus, you had eight million dollars, you had no idea what to do with. So, I recommend helping human beings and investing in human beings. You could start by working on a tiny house village, perhaps, maybe hire some homeless to do that, to work on it. I'm sure they'd be thrilled. A lot of people would be thrilled to have a job, as well as a place to live. And it'd also be pretty good PR for the city, and might make it more of a destination city like you want. The no camping ordinance is not only inhumane, as Mr. Steinberg has said, it's also unconstitutional because it breaks the Amendment 14, which says no state shall deprive citizens of life, property, or liberty without due process of law. So, by taking away their property, you're also taking away their life. So, that is breaking the Fourteenth Amendment, making it unconstitutional. It's frustrating to come here and keep seeing the blank stares and the heads down. I guess we'll have to recall everybody. I mean, it's getting ridiculous, guys. Let's see.
Thank you very much, Eric.
I recommend everyone in this audience read more books.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Tom Dupree?
Hi.
Tom, how you doing?
You know, I, I could be doing a lot better. One of the things that the, this city has provided me with is access to the Salvation Army. Now, the Salvation Army is giving me food and being able to have a place to stay. However, ultimately, this is not a good solution for the vets in this country, because I was just... And there is no solution to get us homes for these people. Now, the Salvation Army has provided me with a place to stay, but ultimately, it's not a place to stay. It's just a bunk bed, and they feed me daily. It's wonderful. But ultimately, I need a job, I need a place to stay. I need an apartment. And I don't know what else to say other than that.
Councilmember Harris.
And ultimately, you know, by having, being homeless, there's been three different organizations here where I paid money to stay at their places. One was off of El Centro Boulevard, and I paid them $700. And I was accused of selling drugs out of their place, and they took my stuff and put it in my car and told me I was going to be arrested. Of course, I wasn't selling drugs because the VA had given me the drugs.
Right.
And so they kicked me out. They didn't provide me a refund for any of that money that I gave them.
So Tom, if I remember correctly, we were able to get you some help through the Salvation Army, is that correct?
Which I-
We were able to help you to get to the Salvation Army, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Harris has a couple of comments he'd like to make to you as well.
Sir, I'd like to suggest that you apply to Mather Community Campus. It seems to me you'd be a great candidate for that program.
Yes, the S H R A told me I didn't qualify for one of those programs, and-
Did you apply directly through Volunteers of America?
Yes. I've done everything I can over at the VA, and ultimately, they just kind of throw up their hands. I'm suffering from arthritis, and they don't want to be able to deal with that either. Which is, they gave me medicine today. I've been having trouble sleeping because I'm in a bunk bed and being able to sleep and be able to have a good night's sleep. I called the EMTs this morning because I could not get sleep.
So Tom, I do know we were able to get you off the street and get you into where you have a place, and I know that's not a long-term solution, but we are still committed to working with you to help you find a longer-term solution, place to stay, a job, and all the other things that you need. So the first step was last week when we helped you, and right now, you've gone from being on the street to not being on the street, correct?
Correct.
That's a good step. So now, getting you the job and the complete care that you need, that's another step that we have to do. So we'll continue to work with you, and we're committed to helping you as much as we can.
That would be appreciated. Ultimately, it's trying to convince the VA that, you know, I have perhaps maybe a mental problem.
Okay.
And I'm not, you know, they don't want to deal with it.
Gotcha. Okay. What member of staff worked with you last time? Okay, Mr. Sanchez. We'll get some additional information from you as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, Rhonda? Is Rhonda G- I think it's Gann, G-A-N?
Mr. Sanchez is back there.
Rhonda can't come in because she won't leave her service cat outside with her homeless gear.
Okay, Pastor Gainsborough then, you're next, and you are the final speaker.
Mayor and city council, it's a lot of work to be done. There's some progress that's been made. I commend the 1,600 vouchers. Mayor Steinberg, that was brilliant and brave. But last week, when Sacramento citizens said that their rent had been doubled, they didn't just say their rent had been increased, some of them, 20% or 30%. Now, I've been coming here over two years, weekly, that's 115 weeks, just roughly numerically there. Nothing was spoken as far as rent control. We will never have, I repeat, we will never have cost-effective housing if we don't control the land barons, the slum lords, and those who are indiscriminately doubling the rent. Last week, every one of you city council heard that people stood here being translated from the Spanish language that their rent had been doubled. I didn't see outrage. I didn't see shame. I didn't see commitment to do something for rent control. I didn't see an Algebor. I didn't see a champion stand up as one of the council. Next week is presenting, Alan Warren, help, immediate help, for 50 to 100 homeless. But I don't see you standing up. I see cowards. I see yellow, yellow silence.
Pastor.
Silence can be golden, but it can also be yellow. And not standing up for the homeless, the poor. If you call yourself a man of the Old Testament, the New Testament, or the God that you say, One Nation Under God, you need to stand up and be a champion for those who have no voice. Rhonda can't come in because she's mentally ill. She has a therapist. She sleeps out there. She's been threatened with death. You do nothing. Do something immediately.
That is the end of the public testimony. Councilmember Carr, did you have a-
Yes, the people who came in from Cedar Ridge last week to describe the situation in their apartment complex, the mold, the windows that were not repaired, the roaches, the deteriorating situation in the apartments, we've taken a look at it. First thing we did was got Rental Housing Association to go out and take pictures and document what the situation was in those houses. Some of the rents have been raised from $750 a month to around $1,100 a month, and it creates a burden on the people who are living there. We've also asked the city attorney to look at the options that he can share with us on what we can do to prevent gouging of people's rent. Because we have a supply shortage of affordable housing, and some people can take advantage of that situation. So we need to understand what the options are in pursuing that. We've also sent code enforcement out to document what the current situation is in that apartment complex. Some of the apartments are being renovated, and we estimate that it's going to cost about $200 a month per apartment to pay for those renovations. And I don't think the ownership is going to be, is going to very likely eat that cost. So to get the houses renovated is one thing, to take care of all of the problems that are in that complex is another thing, and then to determine what we can do as a council to stop the gouging. So that's where we are on that. Sometimes it's a process. Sometimes you have to take some steps. It's not like the city council can jump up one day and say, no one can raise rents in Sacramento. If you do that, it's going to be counterproductive to start with. That means that no one's going to be behooved to build additional units if you cap how much they can make. So we have to do this thoughtfully. We have to do this analytically, and it's got a process. So we're working with the people who came here to complain about their apartment complex. I'm very happy to see them organized. They've reached out to me. I've reached back out to them, and we are taking steps. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the report, Councilmember Carr. Please keep the council and the public abreast of exactly what is happening. We appreciate it. Okay, we now have the consent calendar, and we do have three members of the public who want to testify on the consent calendar, so why don't we do that? And then we will move to the items specifically agendized beyond consent.
Okay, so we have items 1 through 16 on consent. Should be noted for the record that item number three will be continued. And our public comment, we have on items number four, which is Pastor Gainsborough, item number 12, Macworthy, and item number 16, Victor Brazelton. So Pastor Gainsborough.
Mayor and council, anger is not always a sin. The Bible says, be angry, but don't sin with it. When Jesus cleansed the temple of the money changers-
What item are you speaking on, sir?
Item number four. Item number four, I hope we'll never have the city of Sacramento seeing marijuana being displayed on the dais or in the audience here, or in the antechamber outside, or on city hall steps. But apparently, we have the rising public tide to legalize marijuana. Yes, there's billions of dollars to be made, but at what cost? Again, I say there's billions of dollars to be made, but I ask, at what cost? We're going to take $1.2 million of city money in Proposition Number Four and hire enforcement agents and the city hall machinery to oversee the supposed hundreds of billions or hundreds of millions or billions of dollars. But as my father worked as an economist with three U.S. presidents, again, I say there's billions of dollars to be made, but at what cost? He worked for Kennedy, he worked for Eisenhower, he worked for Truman, he commuted to the White House. There's billions of dollars to be made on this marijuana chicanery, and I use a calm phrase, billions of dollars to be made, but at what cost? At what cost when you're going to use the money come in to try to protect your grammar school and junior high students from the flood of corruption? We've had our first death from marijuana traffic infraction in Roseville. You will see dozens of deaths. As alcohol deaths drop, marijuana deaths will rise. Yes, there's money to be made, but again, I say to you as city fathers, again, at what cost?
Macworthy on item, sorry, Macworthy on item number 12?
The water meters. A water meter does not say water. A water meter price water. They put it in front of my house, and we hadn't seen one city council that'd take a look at the hole. It's pitiful. We, one, two young black men are working on it. At least the mayor has spoke about, it wasn't a percentage, a high enough percentage from the public working. He did say something to that. But people, that's where the economists from Sac State talked about the 7,000 jobs, the infrastructure was high. That was minimum wage. Instead, you bring a tank in and use a high-pressure hose to degrade the ground instead of hiring the boys with a pick and shovel and dig down and put the dirt on top of plywood to put back into the hole. Now, you've got to go out and buy dirt to put in the hole when you put the meat in. Furthermore, Peter, the meter is a trick. I was in electronics for several years, technician over at City College, owns law. I was in the business. Plumbing is expertise. People, it's pitiful what you are paying for, and these people is not getting no jobs from. It's what you allow to be put in the ground in front of people's house. It's pitiful. The galvanized pipe is still in under the majority of the waters in Sacramento. The galvanized pipe, it's not plastic. People, why did you tell them from the meter to their house is an old galvanized pipe with about a quarter inch hole for water to go through? Why did you get to them and say, look, if you ain't got plastic like Macworthy, we'll have the people to put it in at a little cost? You didn't. You are here to represent the people. You ain't representing the people. You are ripping the people off. Wake up to what's going on here. The infrastructure need to be some experts to study that. You didn't know what you was agreeing to. 90% of you don't know a pipe from a hose, and you agreed to stuff here that's ridiculous. Wake up. Get back out there.
Thank you.
Get back out there and deal with the-
Thank you, your time is up. Next.
Victor?
What item?
Victor is on item number 16.
Thank you. I wanted to speak, thank you for the time to speak, of course. I wanted to speak briefly about the consent calendar in the hall. Although there are several things that I would like to speak about, having two minutes to speak to 16 agenda items out of 23 causes a person who would like to speak about things that are happening inside of their community that are going to be called for a vote on a very limited amount of time. My concern was item number three, which I know has been continued, but the idea of deputizing people who work in public works and the Department of Housing, I don't understand why we're deputizing these people to be able to make citations or for them to be able to make arrests. When you look at what their mission and his goal is by the city, it is hard for me to understand why it's placed on the consent calendar for those folks to be, one, issue citations, and then, two, be able to arrest folks. They're not trained. There's no idea of what's going to happen or why they have to do it, what training they're going to receive to be able to do it. But we're going to have another group of folks who are now going to be able to walk into the community, who are now going to be able to cite people and arrest people, and it's an up-and-down vote. It's not something that is placed before the council to discuss in front of the community about how it impacts the community or why it should happen in the community. And I think when you place these agenda items so heavily towards a consent, just an up-and-down vote, without any discussion from the council, and you limit the public's ability, which we said, the reason we moved to have items set to the agenda was that we wanted people to focus on the agenda. When we give them two minutes to focus on 16 agenda items that are on the agenda, we're still limited the ability of what the public has to say to you, even on the discussions that you want to have. So I would ask you, please, make sure that the consent calendar is at least manageable for someone to be able to speak to if you're only going to have up-and-down votes on that. Having more than two-thirds of an agenda placed on a consent calendar is a way to continue to silence us when we want to speak to issues that are on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. We now move to items 17 and 18, which are, excuse me, we need to move the consent calendar, apologize. Moved and seconded.
It should be noted for the record that on item number six, I apologize, Member Hanson is going to recuse himself.
And item four has been continued, correct?
Yes.
The exception will take the motion by, excuse me, sorry.
We're getting-
Thank you. We'll take that as a motion by Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Councilmember Gueda, on the consent calendar as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? One abstention noted on item six. The consent calendar passes. Thank you very much. We now will move to items 17 and 18, which are two of our public hearings. These two will be heard together, one regarding housing in dangerous buildings and the other code compliance case fees and penalties. Simpson, welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Carl Simpson, your Code and Housing Enforcement Chief. The items before you are the neighborhood code compliance and housing in dangerous buildings, case fees and penalties for special assessments, liens, and/or personal obligation. Item 17, the housing in dangerous building case fee staff report lists an amended list of 44 properties with a total of $75,003.50 of unpaid fees scheduled for liens against the property. Ten properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as item numbers 1, 5, 16 through 18, 20, 21, 27, 28, 35, 64 through 66, and 71 through 72. Item number 18, the community development department administrative penalties and admin code and neighborhood code compliance case fees, staff reports list an amended total of 55 properties with a sum of $173,951.99 of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for liens and/or personal obligations against the property. Eight properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from the report and are identified as item numbers 8, 9, 13, 15, 17, 23 through 24, 37 through 38, 55 through 66, and 67. Staff recommends that the council adopt the two resolutions separately as amended to allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessment levies and/or personal obligations on the properties.
Okay. We do have, nobody signed but it's be Councilmember Hanson.
I'd like to move to close the public hearing and approve the item.
We need two votes.
For number 17.
We need two separate votes. Number 17 first, moved, seconded. All in favor of item 17, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The measure passes on a nine to nothing vote.
On number 18, I'd like to close the public hearing and move the item.
Moved and seconded and third and fourth. All in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed? Abstain? Nine to nothing. All right. Job's easy. Here we go. So, we're not ready to move it back one. Why don't we take the green, why don't we take the Ramona Avenue extension next? Is that okay, Councilmember Gueda? Let's move to file item 20 without objection. We're skipping around a little bit as there's still some final work being done on item 19. Let's go with item 20, please.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of City Council. My name is Bill Shunk, and I am an associate engineer with the Engineering Services Division in the Department of Public Works. The purpose of this council item is to conduct a hearing on a resolution necessity authorizing city staff to acquire property rights required for the Ramona Avenue Extension Project. The project is located in Council Districts 3 and 6 and will extend Ramona Avenue from Brighton Avenue to Folsom Boulevard near the Sac State campus. This will provide new public access for automobiles, pedestrians, and bicyclists to Folsom Boulevard and improve overall circulation and emergency response times in the region. The extension was first identified in the Southeast Area Transportation Study, which was approved by City Council in 1999, and has been referenced as a necessary project in subsequent agreements and studies, including a memorandum of understanding with Sac State in 2008, the 65th Street Station Area Study in 2010, and the city's 2035 General Plan, which was approved in 2015. City Council approved an environmental impact report for the current alignment of the project in 2012. During the environmental process, multiple alternatives for the extension were considered, including a no-build option and options that extended Ramona Avenue directly to the north. The current alignment running underneath Highway 50 was selected as the best alternative as it avoided an at-grade crossing with light rail tracks, minimized future traffic impacts on Folsom Boulevard, and provided the best connection to the Sac State campus. Final project plans have been prepared, and the project is ready to go to construction pending acquisition of the necessary property rights. One of the remaining property interests for the city to acquire is from 2910 Ramona Avenue. City staff have been negotiating with the property owner for approximately eight months and have not been able to agree on compensation for the property. Notice of this public hearing was sent to the property owner on April 24, 2017. At this time, staff would like to recommend that this hearing be conducted and the City Council adopt the resolution of necessity. A two-thirds vote of the City Council is required, and staff would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have two members of the public who want to testify on this matter. Let's go ahead with that.
Okay, we have James Clark and then Tracy Shaw.
Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark is not here, so we'll call Ms. Shaw. Welcome.
Steinberg.
Be nice to see you.
Good evening, and good evening, members of City Council. I'm Tracy Shaw with Power and Alliance, and thank you for the opportunity to support the city's movement towards bringing the Sacramento Center for Innovation closer to life. This 240-acre infill project just south of Sacramento State's campus is an opportunity for us to really enliven and bring essential jobs to our community. We at the Alliance hope that this moves forward and look forward to the day when this long-term vision of the city becomes a reality. Thank you.
Love the vision. Thank you so much. Very good. I know Councilmember Gueda has been working very hard on these sets of issues. Let me turn it over to him.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, I think, thanks to all the staff. I know that they're still in conversations with the property owner, and I'm hoping that we'll get to a solution. This is one step of a major project that's going to continue ongoing. I want to thank Councilmember Hanson for his work on this as well. I know it takes the whole village to move this item forward, and with that, I'll move the item.
Moved and seconded. Let's hear from Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very important project that's been worked on for literally years. Many concessions have been made and compromises along the way, and there's a lot of momentum to keep this moving. Hopefully, we can reach resolution with the property owner, but if not, this, once again, is really in the public interest on numerous levels, so we really need to see this move forward, and I'm in support.
Very good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ensure that I heard Councilmember Harris say he's closing the public hearing.
That's correct. I am moving to close the public hearing and move the item.
All right, I'll third it. And I just want to say, part of the reason that he talked about the work we'd done on this is we're giving up an at-grade crossing in Midtown to make this happen, and our staff, particularly Nick Theocritis and his team, worked with Union Pacific for, I think, more than a couple of years, is a fair way to put it, to come to this agreement, and it's a big accomplishment. So I just wanted to thank our Public Works staff for sticking with it, researching a bunch of options, because we have to do a one-for-one crossing. We have to close one to open one, which is lower than the normal UP standard. So I also want to thank UP, but our Midtown constituents are doing our part to help the new Innovation District over in Power Inn, and we're proud to do it.
Very good. Thank you very much. You've, very good? Okay. The item has been moved and seconded with the close of the public hearing. We know yet whether we're almost ready on the next item, or do we? We may need to stall for just a little bit of time here. Let's talk about the history of leadership in District 6. Let's go back in time. Okay, I'll-
I'll throw back a little-
I'd like to move to previous question. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Very good. That passes. Okay, I think we're going to go to the Convention Center. Unless we're, unless we're ready with Greenbrier. Are we ready? Okay, hold on. Hold on. Nah.
Ready.
All right. Love it. Okay, let's take then file item 19, which is the, what, now I'm told, hold on. We're gonna, we're gonna go with, we're gonna go with Sacramento Convention Center, file item 21, and then we'll go back to Greenbrier, just so we make sure we've got all the, all the i's dotted, t's and t's crossed. And this is, this is an equally exciting item. Holbacken, welcome.
So, I'm Fran Holbacken with the City Manager's Office, and yes, this is one of many exciting items you have tonight, so I'm pleased to be here. And we're not going to talk about the last five stakeholder meetings that we've been having since January, because we've been before you already bringing you up to speed on that. But rather than just jump into the financing on the project, we do need to give you a little bit of background to help summarize for you some of the things we learned from that process, which allowed us to springboard into the proposal for the project expansion that we have for you tonight. So we will have Scott Summers from our consultant team speak to you briefly to just give you a few details and then explain what the project is, be followed by John Colville, our city treasurer, to talk to you about financing and some of the information that we have more recently developed. I'll come back to close up, make a correction, and also walk you through the nine actions we're asking.
Only nine?
Excuse me?
Only nine?
Only nine. So we'll turn over to Scott Summers, and he'll get started.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Fran, Mayor and Council. We have a lot of slides here today focused on the building, and before we get into details on the building, I thought it'd be really important to walk through the impetus for the whole project, and that's Convention Center as an economic engine that really helps to drive your economy. The biggest thing that we can do to help our building, the Convention Center do that, is to provide the opportunity for what we call stacked events or overlapping events, where we have one event in a part of the building, and another event in another part of the building, and they're not exactly on the same schedule. So the people coming into town for these things stay in hotels, and the occupancy is a little more stabilized. That really generates the most economic impact in your community and creates a great trend for hotels and restaurants as well. So the plan that you see today, really, that is the intent of what we're trying to do. All right, when we look closer at the building that we have today, we saw several challenges, and some of those are highlighted up on the slides here. Most significantly probably is, this is an image up on the screen of the exhibit halls, and when you look at where the truck docks are located, there's three exhibit halls over on the west side that, one of them has direct access, but the other two do not. So if you are someone hosting a convention in the building and you need to get into that space, you actually have to go through another exhibit hall to get to it, and that's not optimal. It doesn't work if we want to stack events. Ceiling height in this space is also an issue, and there are several other issues that are outlined here. Going to the meeting rooms, similar kind of issue with the meeting room ceiling height, the orientation of the rooms and the location is not something that's as attractive to meeting planners and show organizers as it could be. And then the fit and finish in the building, the air walls and the carpet is not quite what it could be looking at other buildings. Circulation, as another example, to get from one side of the building to the other, whether you're a, someone who works in the building or someone who is visiting and attending a convention, it's not as easy as it could be. And those are some of the things that we are looking at dealing with in our expansion. So given that, how do our clients use the building today? I think when we, when we look at what's going on, when we have conventioneers in the building, this kind of points to the crux of the problem. There is not a significant, there's not a sufficient number of meeting rooms, so what happens is they use the ballroom upstairs for meetings. So that forces ballroom events to then go downstairs into the exhibit hall, and that reduces the amount of space that you have available for exhibit halls. So effectively, you've got 150,000 square feet in exhibit space, but you're really operating more like you have 88,000 square feet. So the preferred option that we are proposing as an expansion through the guidance of all of the public meetings, and we won't recap all those today, thank you, fixes and addresses all of these problems. Really, the crux of this is replace the original building constructed in 1972 with a building that meets modern industry standards, provide more flexibility and more connectivity from one side to the other, allow this stacking of events so that we can see the economic impact and the revenues into the TOT and the city's tax coffers that we should, and also to allow for future expansion so that when it's time and it's ready to expand next time, that we haven't painted ourselves into a corner and we have a plan to do that. So what you really see, if you look at floor plans, this is what we'd see at street level, and just a few things to highlight here, the access from the truck docks into the exhibit halls is solved. There's a little space noted with service on the plan that provides that access. Ceiling height is solved. It is consistent from one end of the building in the exhibit halls all the way to the other. We have new lobbies. Most significantly, a lobby on the east side of the building that does not exist today, so there's a way into the building over by the church. And there's also an events plaza between the theater and the new portion of the Convention Center that provides great space for outdoor events and potentially an amphitheater kind of a setting. Up on the second level, several improvements here as well, most notably new meeting rooms, corridor providing a connection from east to west on the upper level, and it's really designed to allow a hotel connection. If a hotel is built south of the Convention Center, as kind of shown on the slide here, there's a potential for a physical connection. And then also up on the, on the top-left portion of the slide, there's a note for a future phase, that is the potential for an additional ballroom of about 40,000 square feet directly above the exhibition hall. Our plan is to do this in, to execute the work in phases so as to minimize disruption. The east portion of the building would be first, followed by the west portion, and minimizing disruption is critical because it will allow us to maintain that level of hotel activity and the flow of tax revenues from visitors outside Sacramento into the community. And we look forward to bringing our general contractor onboard here probably in the next couple of months so they can have input to that process and try to make sure we maintain that TOT tax base as, as much as possible. So that's the extent of my comments. I'm turning it over to John Colville.
Thank you very much. Colville, how are we going to pay for all this?
Well, I hope to answer that question. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm here tonight to provide two scenarios to show the scale of capacity the city has to bond against its TOT revenue. The main caveat here is these numbers show the capacity of bonding, but we will only at this time be bonding for this project, and that'll be a substantially lower number than we're seeing here. The numbers only prove to show that there may be capacity in the future to use excess TOT for other TOT-related projects. So this slide, slide number one is the baseline financing strategy in which we assume actual FY17 TOT revenues, which incidentally are projected to come in a million dollars more than they were projected, which is helping our bottom line, and using growth projections that CBRE, Visit Sacramento, and Halo Hospitality collaborate on. I left that part of the analysis to professionals. That's out of my realm. As you can see from our bonding capacity, we're looking at 247.5 million dollars. If we net out all the projects, Memorial Auditorium's at 16 million at this time, Community Center Theater's at 84 million, and Convention Center is, the general number is about 125 million, leaves 22.5 million dollars of capacity just on this baseline, which does not take into any additional funding into the, into the scenario, leaves us 22.5. Please note that since we are not issuing these bonds till next spring, we built in a 75-basis-point interest rate buffer. Again, this is a transient occupancy tax gross revenue pledge. We maintain $5 million in community center fund to help us in rainy day situations, and this is a leveled debt of $19 million annually. And this includes $60 million of I-Bank funds that California Infrastructure has pledged to this project. Is there any questions on this scenario?
Let's go through the second one so that we can see the difference between the two.
So the second one actually has significant financial inputs into, into the program.
Yeah, like the second one, by the way. Go ahead.
It includes, it has all the same uses, as you see, but the bottom line is it leaves 67.3 million dollars left over of our bonding capacity. This assumes a jump in from 60 to 70 million dollars in the I-Bank loan, which was initially pledged. We're in the process of having the mayor do some consultation on that to see if we can get that extra 10 million. We're potentially getting, we're in the negotiations for potentially getting $14 million in outside funds, which these are, relate to the Sheraton MOPA funds that CIM currently has from the Sheraton project. We'd actually forego bonding, funding the reserve fund with bond proceeds and actually go through a surety and get a $10 million surety bond, which will bring 10 more million dollars back into the project. And then we have the outstanding $20 million naming rights that are still in negotiation. So that gives us about 292.3 million dollars of capacity. And again, this is just capacity that our TOT has versus right now. We are not bonding to these levels. It just shows that there, in the future, there's capacity for a Phase 2, potential for the, for the Convention Center, some help in the Convention Center hotel development, and a destination fund for the city.
And the timing of the bond sale would depend upon when any project, for example, designated as part of the Destination Sacramento Fund is ready to, would be ready to go?
Is that the council's will, the mayor and council's will? Yes.
Yeah, clarifying question, Councilmember.
Thanks, John. I just want to be clear, the difference between Scenario 1 and Scenario 2, is it a difference in, or extending the TOT out?
There's no difference in the-
Or the, the TOT rate stays the same?
The TOT rate stays the same. There's no difference in the substance, it's just the difference in the added money bringing into the fund.
But the added money is coming because, I'm sorry, I just, this is an important point.
No, no, it's a very important point.
Where, can you just walk through that again for me?
Well, there's $14 million that CIM has as a holdover for the Sheraton MOPA.
So that's the MOPA, so they put this into the project in some way, shape, or form? So, that's the MOPA, so they put this into the project in some way, shape, or form?
We think we can get at that, correct?
That's, that's part of your 240 to 290.
Right. So, this, we're really looking at two ends of the spectrum. We're looking at the baseline is the bare nuts version of what we can do, and then adding, if we could get a wish list of everything we want, gets us to this loan. So, we're somewhere.
Let me, let me ask the question this way, maybe it'll be easier, at least for me. If you go from 60 to 70 million on the infrastructure bank, so we need 10 million in additional collateral to cover that 10 million additional loan, is that correct?
It, collateral in what regards, sir?
Well, why would they go from 60 to 70? We've got to have something backing, what's backing that? The delta on that, what's backing it?
What's changed is from initially in October, they said they were going to pledge 70 million dollars. They've since gone through their portfolio and don't want to oversaturate the Sacramento area, so they decided to drop it down to 60 million. So, there's really no backing, the TOT would still back the.
I'm going back to them and asking if they will put it back to 70 million dollars.
And I guess, so I guess the question is, for the 40 to 50 million dollar delta that you've got from whatever it was, 244 to 292, not changing any of your assumptions?
It's not changing. It's the 14 million dollars, the 20 million dollar naming rights that are potentially on the board, and the ability to not fund the reserve fund with bond proceeds and using a surety bond.
Got it, okay. That answers my question.
So, I'm concerned about potential misimpression here, and I want to make sure, I don't, I don't know that you need a Scenario One, I really don't. We've been working all of these numbers for several months now. This has been part of the purpose of the public process and certainly our intensity over the last couple of weeks. Can you get a surety bond?
Yes.
Okay. The naming rights were already negotiated, if you will, or at least discussed as part of the theater project, correct?
The theater and the convention center.
And the convention center. And so, that's accounted for, albeit it has to be negotiated over what time the 20 million dollars would be paid, but that's a real number. The 14 million dollars in funds from the Sheraton deal, we believe that we can get at that for purposes of investing in these sets of projects, correct?
Yes. If, if the negotiation goes well, yeah, there's, it makes sense for them to do that deal because it lifts all boats. If they invest in the convention center, then it drives TOT to the Sheraton.
And then, I have the job of going back to the state and trying to get that 10 million, that additional infrastructure number from 60 to 70 million, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, this is all based on real analytic work, correct?
It sure is.
Okay.
We've been living it for.
And that leaves us then 67.3 million dollars for three purposes beyond the cost of expanding the convention center. One is the potential subsidy around an east end hotel, which is partnered with this project. Two is to, down the line, have resources available to begin investing in the second phase of the convention center expansion. And three is the establishment of the Destination Sacramento Fund to begin investing in other destination amenities in Sacramento, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm clear. Thank you. Very good. Thanks a lot, John. Appreciate it. Yes, Councilman Carr.
Steps down. John, the debt service for the Scenario One was what again?
It's, it's similar, they're 19 million dollars annually. There's 19 and 19.1. The only difference is there's more money up front in the Scenario Number Two.
So, the reason the debt service hasn't increased is because the 10 million?
Because of the cash inflows, yes.
Got it. And we didn't assume naming rights under Scenario One?
That's, Fran can answer the naming rights situation.
We had always assumed 20 million dollars of naming rights in the collective set of the three projects, with the convention center, the memorial, and the theater. We just didn't allocate it in any particular place, so we're just showing here that that is additional funding. We're testing the 20 million, that would come in as additional funding.
But in the Scenario One, you didn't have the naming rights?
He was simply showing the baseline of what borrowing could happen with the TOT that we have.
Did not include naming rights in Scenario One, no.
There was 30 million difference in that, accounts for the big.
20.
20.
Well, 20, that's what I'm saying, is that it, Scenario One to me, just my preference, not necessary because these, this is not hypothetical. We can get the surety bond. We've already estimated the value of the naming rights, the prior council did that in the, in the discussion and beginning negotiation around the Community Center Theater and Memorial Auditorium. The 14 million dollars, we've got, we've done the legwork now to show that we can reinvest that in the project as John said a moment ago, to lift all boats. And so, Scenario Two is based upon months of work that culminates in tonight's discussion.
So, I'm going to wrap up the, the presentation. So, first, the correction that I want to make sure and get into the record was, after this report was published, we became aware of an error we had made. We'd been talking about a bond sale in the fall, so roughly October, but we, what we didn't put together with that was that the environmental document doesn't get certified until February of next year, and so we can't actually go out with a bond sale until we've gotten the project cleared. So, now we're looking at a, roughly a March bond sale, which is one of the reasons why we've shown you, before we were looking at 50 basis points as a possibility of how much, how much more it might cost in the fall, so we've gone to 75 basis points to get us through to March. And then, just to go over what these actions are, the nine actions are made up of, first, we're asking you to allow us to proceed with the design. We've, all we've done right at this point is basically define the project. So, now we'll go into the first real phase of design, which is called schematic design, and we're asking for your approval to do that. Then we have a series of contracts with other consultants on this team to carry us through the schematic design phase. We need to do some internal loans because we have a cash flow issue. When the bond sale happens, the, the project costs, both the construction cost and the soft cost of delivering the project are covered in the bond sale. So, because we need to award some of these contracts, we need to borrow internally from a couple of different sources. So, one of them is the General Fund and one is the Innovation and Growth Fund. That was introduced to you last week where it was talked about that that money would go, it'll be, go out this fiscal year, but it will return to you at the bond sale next fiscal year. And then we have a position, we need to correct a position in order to dedicate another staff member to the project. And then the last thing is, we're asking you to direct the city manager and the city treasurer to return this summer with a framework for the financing of the convention center expansion and renovation, both phases, a potential project assistance for a convention-serving hotel, and creation of the proposed Destination Sacramento Fund, including what projects would be eligible, what the sources and the timing would be as we get more understanding of those projects. And I wanted to thank the team, especially Desmond Perrington, who has been the project manager for the three projects, but there's a large number of staff members from all throughout the city, our consultants, our stakeholders. We had stakeholders who stuck with us for five meetings that were, and they were well-attended meetings. Many of them are here in the audience today, Councilmember Hanson, and the mayor and the mayor's staff for all, for all the work, because it's been a lot of work getting here to this point, and we just want to thank everybody for pulling together to bring us here.
We thank you, Fran, and both thank yous for many in, in just a bit. Okay, we do have public testimony here, and then we will open it up for council discussion and comments.
Okay. So, we will start with Brian Larson, and then Michael Alt, Robert Copeland, and Mac Worthy.
Good evening, Council, members of the audience. I started working on this project on behalf of Visit Sacramento in 2011. We commissioned a marketing study by CSNL to determine our competitive position as a convention center against the people that we sell against. That's been many years of hard work and a lot of people engaged along the way. Really appreciate the rigorous process we've been through both before and particularly currently in this process. It's a 25-year-old convention center by the time we would finish this expansion, and we want to be one of the top 25 destination meeting markets in the U.S., and we think this gets us to that end. When we expanded in 1996, we had 890 hotel rooms downtown. We did 8.9 million dollars in TOT. Now we have 2,100 hotel rooms in downtown, and we are at 24 million. There's a direct causal, cause and effect of those two being in alignment, but we need to continue to grow. This bookend catalyst, in addition to Golden One, really fills in the JKL corridor in our mind, and I've always said this, and I said it to Councilman Harris today. One of my reasons for doing this project and putting in the work I've put in on a volunteer basis is, in my lifetime, I want to see my four teenage daughters be able to walk from one end of K Street to the other end after dark without me escorting them and feel safe. I think that's a really admirable thing, and I think that is what we are all here to do. I appreciate your attention to this very important project, and thank you all for the hard work that's gone into it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Alt, welcome.
Mayor, members of council, city manager, Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. I think it goes without saying, this has been a long process that started, I think, several years ago, talking about the competitive advantage of the convention center, and I think this is the right project, and for a couple of reasons. And I think the momentum that you see from the business community, the importance that this facility has in supporting restaurants, hospitality industry cannot be understated. But we find ourselves in a position where we're not only out of date as a facility, but at a competitive disadvantage with our competitors. And if we don't invest in this center, if we don't look at ways to really show the users of this facility that we're on track to not only advance it, but invest some real resources with new hotels, we're going to miss the curve and be missed as part of future convention opportunities. Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, you've showed some real leadership with this process. I think when this process started, people assumed the answer was already in front of us, so we had a very deliberative process, not only members of the business community, but residents that I think had a voice at the table, and I do commend you for that. The one thing that we need to keep in mind in moving forward though is, as we've invested in the Community Center Theater and Memorial Auditorium, we must continue this investment. This process, we were clear, needed to be data-driven, cost-effective, and be competitive, and I think that we've achieved that. If we are going to continue, I think, the advancement of what we're trying to create and what we've all invested in the downtown core, moving forward with this investment is a priority. So, on behalf of the Downtown Partnership, our board, our stakeholders, we encourage you to move forward, and thank you for being part of the process.
Thanks so much, Michael. Thank you for your leadership and hanging in there.
Robert?
Well, I have a few questions about this project. Is there enough parking in Sacramento for this expansion? How many people are going to go to this if it's stacked and have more of that at one time? And how much is it going to bring into Sacramento, and how much revenue is going to come to Sacramento, and how many jobs are going to be created? I don't hear none of that listed, and I think we ought to know why those were not listed on this thing. And how is it going to benefit the Sacramento person? Thank you.
Hey, Mac Worthy?
Thank you.
Following Mac Worthy is Jamison Parker, and then Fago, and then John Aguirre.
People, that place have had red ink since it was built. I cleaned the Lake of California cities for 28 years. I saw what come in and I saw what went out. You could not buy the Lake of California cities building for expansion because Barbara, a previous mayor of Redwood City, said, "Hell no." You couldn't go across to the alley because that's the Lake of California cities home, that's how it was built. But anyway, you talk, but you're not respecting the people here in this town. And you talk about a big time city, you will never have a big time city with hotels, none participating basketball team, and a facility like that. You don't even have parking. Tad down and put on the pocket so you can have a cash flow. You could back the bond, and you're tampering with infrastructure money. And I've been telling you, the reason I said vote down, measure you money, because some of that money got into the arena, just like the infrastructure money going to get into here. This is the reason I keep telling people to write their letters to the government, earmark that infrastructure money, because you don't know what you're doing. The economy will not produce enough money here for that to be black ink. It's not here, people. And it ain't going to never be. Sacramento will never be a town large enough. You are depending on Rensselaer, Elgro, and Roseville. That's who you're depending on. You're not depending on the people here because the money ain't here. You are a welfare city. Welfare people, they move this money over here to go to lunch that they should have went to the school function. They move the school lunch money over here and take the babies and get a hamburger. That's what you got. You got no new money. Here is a hundred and some million dollars for designing. People, if a construction can't come in here and do it from the city that bridges, don't use the taxpayers' money. If he can't put up the money designing, turn it down, people. You abusing taxpayers' money when you paying somebody to come in here and make money, and you're not talking about unemployment.
Jamison?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Jamison Parker, advocacy manager with the Midtown Association. We support the expansion for two reasons, really. The main, primary job of the convention center is to bring visitors to Sacramento. In Midtown, 50% of our economic influence is generated by restaurants and entertainment venues. That's an important function of the convention center and therefore important to us in Midtown. Additionally, I think there's an opportunity to address some of the design deficiency, especially that you have at the eastern end of the convention center. For a long time, you know, the convention center has been inward-facing along 15th Street. I think you have an opportunity to engage Midtown and make a nice connection from downtown to Midtown in supporting the local and unique businesses that you have in our area. We applaud the efforts of the mayor, Councilmember Steve Hanson, the hard work of staff, and all the stakeholders involved, and we urge that you support this item this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fago? Still not here? All right, John Aguirre. After John is Chris Weave, Steve Hammond, and Dennis Newfeld.
Mayor, council members, thank you. My name's John Aguirre, president of the California Association of Wine Grape Growers. I'm here this evening with Dan Howard, executive director of the American Society of Analogy and Viticulture. Together, our two shows own and operate the Unified Wine and Grape Symposium, which takes place every year at the end of January at the convention center. The Unified is the largest wine industry trade show in North America and fully occupies the Sacramento Convention Center. Our show accommodates approximately 670 exhibitors and features a wide array of winery and vineyard products, services, and technology. We've been at the convention center since 1996. We attract 14,000 attendees every year from 32 different countries, and as you can imagine, we deliver an enormous benefit to our area restaurants and hotels and other hospitality providers. We're told the Unified generates more than 4.3 million dollars for the city of Sacramento, more than any other single event at the convention center. The proposed expansion and renovation is a credit to all who've worked on it. We believe the convention center expansion and renovation will result in a better show experience for our exhibitors and attendees and allow us to grow the Unified show. We see additional hotel capacity as key to an improved convention center experience. We utilize 1,500 rooms on peak night. We understand, however, the Unified will need to relocate to another venue for 2020, and we've looked at other cities, San Francisco and San Jose, both offer excellent facilities, but we want to stay in Sacramento. But I want to say, we'll work with Visit Sacramento to stay in the city, but we're very concerned about the possibility of construction delays, noting that the center's supposed to be completed in December 2020. We have a long planning and production horizon, and we need adequate notice to plan for the 2021 show. So, that's my key message. We're excited about the expansion and renovation. We look forward to working with you. If there is going to be construction delays, we very much need to know far in advance, as far in advance as possible. Thank you very much.
John, we appreciate greatly your continued belief and investment in Sacramento, and of course, we will work with you to communicate with you every step of the of course, we will work with you to communicate with you every step of the way because we want you here.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris Weir. Apologize, I said it wrong before.
My last name, I've gotten very used to having it mispronounced. Mayor, Council, first of all, I'd like to thank the leadership of Steve Hanson and the mayor for bringing this forward. I am the Research Director of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and we would like to support wholeheartedly going forward with this convention. If we've learned nothing else from the modern economy is the importance of innovation, the fact that if you're going to either innovate or die in this modern economy, and I would just like to laud you for all your innovations in terms of this. The city has been willing to reexamine its preconceptions. It's been willing to bring together all the stakeholders to a number of meetings where we were all able to examine the data and really think about what was the value of putting together a convention center in our community, and had a broad discussion along those lines. I wanted to particularly thank the mayor for thinking more broadly and having this idea of Destination Sacramento and coming up with new ideas to create a platform for building a visitation economy in Sacramento that we hope very much will bring a large number of new jobs to the city. And we also want to thank the council for thinking more broadly on different ways of managing both the operations and the marketing of this convention center. I think that the council and the city has begun to think different, and by thinking differently, you're going to be able to bring great benefit to the city of Sacramento. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Chris, and thank you for all your participation, and the board, and Barry as well.
Been a great amount of fun.
Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Steve Hammond with Visit Sacramento, and it's a very exciting night. First, I want to thank all of you here and city staff for getting us to this point. Collectively, we've been working on this plan for over six years. The staff has developed a very solid plan based on recommendations from some of the top consultants and industry professionals in the country who have designed convention centers around the world. The plan also includes input from clients, stakeholders, the local steering committee, and public outreach. The current convention center performs well for its size, especially considering that we're one of the smallest convention centers on the West Coast. However, we continue to struggle against the competition who have expanded within the last few years with San Jose and Long Beach, our two largest competitors being at the top of that list. CBRE, the city's consultant, estimates that Sacramento will add about 2,000 rooms to the downtown inventory over the next 20 years, and the staff report takes that into consideration as they looked at the construction schedule. We agree with staff that the expansion needs to be phased in over time so the facility grows at the same rate as the market demand, a stair-step approach that allows for new hotel development that supports the facility's expanded sellable space. This is prudent stewardship of your civic investment. Cities need to take responsibility for expanding their visitor amenities in the downtown that support new and existing businesses. They need to make courageous decisions and advocate for developments that will enhance their ability to attract more tourists and conventions. This plan answers that call. And on behalf of the Visit Sacramento Board of Directors, I want to thank, as many people have, Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Hanson, for your leadership, and I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout-out to Fran Holbacken, who's been standing side-by-side with us for years now to finally get us to this evening. So, thank you, Fran, for all your hard work as well.
Thank you very much, Steve, and you for hanging in there as well. You've done a great job for us, continue to. Thank you.
Hey, Dennis Newfeld, and then Fabrizio Sasso, and Scott Vandenberg is our last speaker.
Got a chart here. Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers Dennis Newfeld, treasure for Eye on Sacramento. Last year, I gave you several presentations showing the economic perils of expanding the convention center, most focused on the history of the massive red ink generated by the center, a quarter billion dollars over the last 17 years, a huge fiscal sinkhole. Here's my key graph. This graph shows that Sacramento already spends more of its hotel tax on the convention center than any other competing city, 87%. This is Sacramento here. The other competing cities average 45% of their hotel tax on their convention center. The other 55% goes into the general fund. 13% of Sacramento's goes into their general fund. With this expansion, bond payments will grow, continuing the dominant reliance on ignoring other spending priorities. The dominant question is, is this expansion worth the risk? We provided you with our report as well. You all received this. We also gave each of you a book by professor called Convention Center Follies. I hope it's not gathering dust on the shelf. He is the expert in the failed convention centers in America. Granted, the 1990s expansion has handicapped our center with limited customer mobility, but will a perfectly-designed expansion center guarantee increased bookings? Is the center's design the only problem, and once solved, is... Will conventioners suddenly come to Sacramento? What about the lack of nearby hotel rooms? Few tourist attractions, homelessness, and blazing summers? This convention center expansion project, I predict, will continue to become a long-term financial tar baby.
Dennis, thank you. Your time is...
I've got one more, Mayor, if I could.
Real quick, you put in a lot of time, I'll give you a...
This is a zoom that shows three giraffes, and they're talking.
Okay.
And he said, one guy says, "Guys," this is the last page of my report, "guys, this convention center expansion looks too financially risky. It's just not worth sticking our necks out for it."
Dennis, let me just ask you, Mr. Newfeld, any acknowledgement of the fact that collectively, including with your participation, we brought down the cost of this project from $170 million to $125 million? Does Eye on Sacramento think that that was a step in the right direction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Want to make sure that was acknowledged. Go ahead. Thank you, Dennis.
Fabrizio's next.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mayor Fabrizio Sasso, Executive Director of the Sacramento Central Labor Council. We're here to support the expansion and renovation of the convention center. We know that this project's going to bring good jobs to the area, particularly in the construction industry, as well as our service workers and maintenance workers. We know that these jobs are good jobs, these are good middle-class jobs. Folks are able to support their families on them, and so we're in full support. You know, a single-asset economy is not sustainable, and it's, we are very vulnerable when we only have a large asset, say, as the arena. This would actually make us a little bit more competitive and allow us to grow our economy in the right direction. So, there are, I've been involved in this project for a little over a year, and I want to thank, I want to thank the mayor and Councilmember Hanson for including labor at the table. We, I went with region builders to Austin and Indianapolis to look at their convention centers, and we learned quite a bit. And last weekend, I spent the whole weekend at the, at our convention center, someone as a tourist, and we realized that we are falling short in being competitive in this market. So, it takes bold vision to upgrade and expand this, and so, again, we want to thank the mayor and Councilmember Hanson for bringing cats and dogs together and getting us to all be on the same page, and we respectfully ask for your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation and hard work, Fabrizio, and all your colleagues with the Labor Council. We appreciate it.
Hey, Scott?
Vandenberg, last? Okay.
All right, thank you. And my name is Scott Vandenberg. I'm General Manager at the Hyatt Regency Downtown, and I've been past Chairman of the Board for the Visit Sacramento and also past President for the Sacramento Hotel Association, and I'm here to kind of speak on behalf of both of those organizations. I've been on the steering committee for this project and also participated in the stakeholder meetings, and I think together we all learned a lot about this project, and I thank Councilman Hanson and Mayor for putting that together, because I think we are at a good place now, and we really have something that's going to work for our city and help us to attract new conventions and stack conventions on top of each other to increase room nights in the city, and also hopefully be a great project to stimulate a new hotel coming into the downtown market. And speaking of the new hotel, it's something that the Hotel Association and Visit Sacramento support. It's really needed for us to continue to attract new conventions and larger conventions, and combined with the convention center and possibly a new hotel in our downtown market, we certainly will be able to compete much better with the markets that we do compete with right now. So, this process has been great. I think we're at a good point. We certainly support this project, and I know, I would like to thank Fran and the city staff for all their work as well. We've all had our hearts into this for a long time, and I think we're at a good place. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your participation as well. That is the public testimony. We do have a couple Councilmembers. I know I want to make some comments, but I'm going to turn it over to my colleague who, just want to say off the top, really put his heart and head into this, long before I even got here, and I'm very grateful for his leadership. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your leadership. You've contributed a lot, and I think what we have tonight before us is a great project. I just want to start with a couple thank-yous. First, our staff, City Treasurers Office, Fran, you, Desmond, and I see our folks from Convention Culture over there, including the famous Matt Voyer, who got a shout-out earlier from the Management Academy. You all do a wonderful job on behalf of the people of Sacramento, and I believe this is an example of how by working together, we deliver a better product. There are a lot of people around the room, mostly people who are sitting around the table during those five meetings. So, whether it's Visit Sacramento, the Downtown Partnership, Midtown, Peter from the Chamber, Fabrizio, it was, I don't know if cats and dogs is the right, but it's a useful analogy. There are people at the table who learned a lot together, and I think sometimes learned a lot more than they planned to about how convention business works, how hotels work. But I want to say thank you to all of you for participating in that process. I also really appreciate the fact that we've got the Unified Symposium here tonight. You've been a major focus of our conversation because you're one of our best customers, and it is not lost on us that we would like to keep you in perpetuity. I don't know if we can sign that contract, but I would certainly like to. But it's also not lost on me that when I look at your website and your FAQs, there's two questions that stand out, and I think they're really fair questions, and they're part of the reason that we're having this conversation. The first one is, why aren't there more rooms at the downtown hotels near the convention center? That is a key question, and it's driven by a bunch of different things. When we asked the Baria Council to help give us some independent advice about this project, they said, based on peer cities, we're about 2,000 rooms short of where peer cities are in our downtown core. That's pretty big, but it's underscored by the fact that when we looked to bring the NCAA tournament here, they were saying we had to bring a cruise ship into the Port of West Sacramento, Port Sacramento, to handle the capacity we would need to be eligible to host that tournament. And I think whether you take Chris Weir and his innovate or die, I don't choose death, but if you take that approach in the competition we are facing, I think that we're trying to do smartly, not some kind of edifice complex here that's bigger than needed or inefficient, some monument to the ego of our city. We're really smartly, I think, through the work of this task force and the leadership of our mayor, trying to deliver a product that's efficient, effective, has the capacity to help us grow our business and maintain our business, but also to help drive that hotel demand, because we need those more, those additional rooms, whether it's the proposed convention center hotel that's sort of been talked about tonight, or any of the other potential projects within three or six blocks, because we have the opportunity sites. I would like, by the time we're finished with this process and this project is underway, to have this question be answered, there are sufficient rooms in the downtown core that you don't need to look outside to get your room. The other question is, why isn't the Unified Symposium held in another city where more hotel rooms are close to the event? Your answer here is part of the reason why we need to act. It's that this has been considered for years and continues to be considered, that it's not a sure thing that we will continue to have the convention business in our central city that we have now. Other cities are competing, they're investing, and we have to continue to be relevant to our customers, and there's no doubt that I believe we want to do that, not only tonight, but through our investments that we've already committed to in the Community Center Theater and the Memorial Auditorium, but also in catalyzing some of these additional hotel rooms. Because that question about, why isn't it held in another city? That hurts. That hurts our civic pride, and for the indomitable city, we want to be indomitable. Right, Mayor? That's your destination fund. So, I know I've kind of gone on about this, but I think the questions that your conventioners ask are at the very heart of why we need to act and why we need to act now to keep this moving forward. This is a step. I know that this is a long, tortuous process for a lot of folks, but this is a really important step we take tonight, and so whether we can stay on track or not, I think that question about the process, Fran, is really important, and I know the mayor committed to communicating, but I'd just like to hear from staff. Where we are on our schedule, our ability to meet the schedule as it's been laid out, not just on the convention center, but on the theater and memorial in particular, because those are prerequisites in some ways, are we, with the bond schedule that we heard about tonight, able to keep this project on track?
So, the schedule that we have been working on includes all three projects because they are related to each other. So, we are on schedule. We had planned to go in construction in March, which is the month after the EIR is approved. So, at this point, if we can, if we can time the bond sale, we should be right there. The question that the gentleman asked about the Unified, we believe that we can cut at least a couple months off of the schedule, but until we bring the contractor onboard, we can't verify that for you. So, we are very aware of when the most important shows, the most important events are actually booked, and we believe we can better the schedule, but until, we don't want to, you know, give people false hopes. We really need a contractor to come onboard, and we will continue at each phase with a schematic design. We'll bring you an updated schedule with each, you know, typically it's the 30, 35, 60, 65. We'll keep updating the schedule as we go along.
So, and with the memorial improvements to get the theater underway, are we on schedule with this?
We are on schedule.
Okay. Is there anything we need to be doing to keep this moving?
You know, Desmond has more details than I do. A couple of things we're doing is talking about, there are some long lead items, so we're looking at ways to purchase the longer lead items. There are some things that if we purchased them and got them ahead of time, we would be able to start putting them to use, so we are looking at some of those things, which actually help reduce costs, because we can make certain that the cost of that item won't go up if we wait, so we are looking at some of those things.
And will you be bringing that back in August with the report back on some of the other stuff, or sooner?
I'm not sure what the timing is. It might be sooner.
Desmond?
Come on up. No shouting.
This is the famous Desmond Parrecton. He survived Golden One Center. He can handle this.
So, it may very well be earlier. There's a number of items associated with Memorial Auditorium. There may be some similar items with the Community Center Theater. As Fran mentioned, to the extent that we can purchase those things now, that will save us both on time and money, because you'll avoid cost escalation. So, we may be back looking for possibly another loan to allow for that to happen, and then those get paid back during the bond proceeds, but it will help reduce costs and move the project forward.
All right. All right. Thank you. The last thing I have is really for the mayor. I think he's going to speak last. But we saw on that chart tonight, you got some work to do, whether it's with the infrastructure bank, the naming rights, with a variety of things. Let us help you.
Please.
I think the Destination Fund is going to be a significant legacy. And as that comes back and is formed, I think that we're all interested in making sure that that's successful. But thank you for your leadership on this. You've really shown clarity of vision and a willingness to get everyone together and hash it out.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So with that, I'll move the item.
Boy, Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Councilmember Carr. Let's hear from Councilmember Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been around long enough to see these projects go through several iterations, and many people have worked on this project, including our new mayor. And thank you, Steve, for all your hard work. I know you've put a lot into it. So the project has settled to a place where I think that we're all in agreement, that it looks fully functional and will serve the purpose that we need and be affordable as well. So I definitely support tonight's actions to make the short-term loans to move the design process forward. That's another step that needs to be undertaken. I'm excited about the projects, and specifically, the Community Center Theater and the Memorial Auditorium as precursors to working on the Convention Center are really very important to the city. I'm excited that they're staying in the same locale, so we have the bookends on each end of K Street from G1C down to the theater area. I think that this really bodes well for the future of Sacramento. So when I look at all the numbers that have been presented, I see a lot of scenarios that show how this project can work and how it can work well and how we can actually afford it. Lot of TOT projections, hotel rooms, the interplay of the Convention Center and hotel rooms and how they each advance each other. What I haven't seen, however, is a real stress test of the numbers, if you will. And I've talked about this to staff and to other people who've worked on the project. So as we move forward closer to up to $220 million of bonded indebtedness, what I would like to see from you, Mr. Treasurer, is making assumptions if things don't go well. What if we have an economic downturn and that scares off people from building hotel rooms? Will this project stand on its legs in the face of a glitch in the economy? Maybe, you know, a period of time where the hotel rooms don't come up and can the general fund, you know, take that? Will the $5 million backstop that's maintaining the Convention Center Fund be adequate? So as we move forward, I'd like to just work with you and look at possible scenarios by which this wouldn't work. And to me, that's just being prudent. If we can show that even in the face of adversity, this project is absolutely a go, then I think we make a really strong case to the people that this is absolutely the way we need to proceed. So if you'd indulge me in that, I think it's a worthwhile exercise and I look forward to working on it with you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. We saw last week, the people from Cedar Ridge come in with their issues and the issues that they are faced with and they live with every day. And one of the things that we've done as a city, when the Golden One Center was constructed, we dedicated jobs to certain individuals in our region. And that worked really well. And those people are now, for the most part, union workers and making high wages. Then we had the water meter installation project, the acceleration of the water meter installations. And we modified the formula a little bit. We targeted people from certain ZIP codes so that we could raise the income level in various communities. And I don't know if everyone knows, but that is going on now. And the contractors report at no additional cost, and there are no scheduled delays with the formula that's being used for the advanced meter installation. So here with the Convention Center, the theater, and Memorial Auditorium, when we get to construction phase, we have another opportunity to leverage the buying power of the city to improve communities that have been underserved and to get individuals who not otherwise have a chance, a high-paying job. We've been working with Economic Development, so when this comes, when construction phase starts, I'm sure you will coordinate with Economic Development that we will have a proposal to target those communities and those individuals who are most needy to be able to benefit from the city dollars that are going into this proposal. You got a yes on that, huh?
Yes. The program was going to come forward a little earlier from Economic Development, and they are not quite ready to bring it forward. So we will be working with them to understand the various ways this program can work, because there isn't only one way to do that. We do know, though I will make this one comment, that it's really interesting right now in the construction industry. There's really not, you would be surprised that there's a lack of workers out there. And that is costing construction projects in a big way, because they're having to pay to bring labor in. A lot of labor has gone to the Bay Area because they are doing a lot of work there. And so we are really looking at this, and we will work with the unions and as well as Economic Development to try to figure out how to make this happen. Because the issue is, when you bring people in that haven't done this, they don't come onboard right away. It takes a while to work them into the programs. And so we have started looking at it, and we will continue to work on this and figure out, at the time we come in to ask you for approval to go to construction, what the best way to achieve that goal is.
Look forward to it, Fran.
Well, it's one of the reasons why we've launched Thousand Strong. We want those young people to be prepared from our communities to be able to enter the workforce when it comes to these big projects. I'm really glad, Larry, Councilman Carr, that you made this point. Because we do have some experience with the Golden One Center. I think everyone agrees that was a success. I'd like to see us not only build upon it, but improve it. Because that was a lot of good faith and intent. I'd like to see us tighten it up as much as possible to make sure that the kids from your district and from respective districts, especially low-income communities in this city, are in that pipeline to work on these big projects. Okay. So I want to just...
They dread me to make sure I've said that.
Well, because he believes it, absolutely. So I guess, final comment. There are so many people to thank, and I will, I don't want to name, I can't name everybody by name, because I will forget people. But there were so many good people involved in this process. And, you know, Howard, thank you for your leadership and Fran specifically, because you've been spearheading this and helped see this through. And John Coldfield, thank you for Scenario Two especially, for really working with us. You know, a week and a half ago, we thought we were at a lower number, and, you know, this is the iterative process of working so creatively, and so many good people on this task force. Again, led by my friend and colleague, Steve Hanson, who rolled up his sleeves and his district, but we worked really well together. And the folks from Visit Sacramento, and Steve, and Mike, and Jody, and all the good people, Tony Giannoni especially for all your advice, Jose Hermosillo, the GSAC folks who really, you know, stepped out there, a little controversial, but were asking the right questions here. Desmond, and everyone who participated. A special thank you to my chief staff, Mike McKeever, who talked about a project manager, I mean dug in, in ways that I think were really good for the project and really good for the city. And so I want to thank you. And I want to speak just for a second about process. Process is boring. Nobody likes to talk about it. But I do think that what we've done in the last couple of months is illustrative of how we should make key decisions as a city. You know, in my first week, we sought to amend the rules to say that ad hoc committees should be public as opposed to private. Well, this was a heck of an ad hoc committee. We gathered, you know, 40 of us at a time, mostly at the Convention Center, in public. And it leads to a better result. It leads to a better result when we all push each other, and the public pushes us in a constructive way to question our initial assumptions and to try to accomplish the end result that we all seek. And I'm very proud of the process and hope that it serves as a model going forward. So the point for me, from the very beginning of this, and now we come to this point, which is certainly not the end, is that Sacramento can and must accomplish more than one big advance at a time. We can have a first-rate Convention Center with more meeting space, with a public space that can serve as an outdoor concert or amphitheater space. We can fix all the logistical challenges that have made stacking and multiple conventions at one time a problem. But we can do so at a significantly lower cost. We can do so by coupling the project with a 350-room, four- or five-star hotel. We can accomplish it by prudently planning for a second phase. And we can do so by having tens of millions of dollars left over to invest in a Destination Sacramento Capital Fund. We can do it all. For, in this city, we have the opportunity to take this economic renaissance to levels that have never been imagined. And we will. We can do more than one thing at a time. And when we talk about destination, we're not just talking about tourism. It's also about ensuring that people who have lived here in our great city for a long time, people who have a choice as to where they want to live, choose Sacramento in part because they feel that we have it all here. Why do you have to go somewhere else when we have it all here? And so whether it's 50 million or 60 million in this Destination Fund, as we build it up, I want to give a little hint that this is just the beginning of seeding a major capital fund that will allow us to do more rather than less, and to be able to do more than one thing at a time. For example, next week, I believe it's next week, June the 6th, we are going to have a workshop here Tuesday evening on the riverfront. And I've asked Richard Rich, people have talked about the riverfront for a long time. And we've used the bissection of I-5 from the downtown to the riverfront as the long-held excuse for why we can't do more. Enough. Enough of that. Next week, we're going to look at 50 or so potential projects, and we're going to put tentative costs by many of them. And we're going to look to see how we might match this Destination Sacramento Fund with the beginning of activating the riverfront. And the riverfront, of course, is not the only thing that could help define Destination Sacramento. Finally, we still have the question of operations. And as you know, we did put out a request for information, and we asked both private operators and our current public operators to tell us how they would maximize the potential of not just the Convention Center, but the Memorial Auditorium, the Community Center Theater. And we are talking to all of the parties, and they all present excellent options for us. But we will come back, I think in several weeks, to have that discussion and potentially take action as well. So we are not done. I hope tonight is a, we'll call it a turning point, but a big night for our city. I think that it is, and hopefully we'll look back in a few years when we see multiple Destination amenities, including a Convention Center that I know we will be very proud of become a reality. I stand corrected, the Riverfront Workshop is June the 13th, not next week. So you have to wait two weeks for the fulfillment of this great announcement that I just made. So, in two weeks. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Nothing else? All in favor? Please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Nine to nothing. Thank you very much, everybody. Good job. We do have one more important item tonight. Okay. And that is the Greenbrier Project. Thank you. No, this is the last item. We are ready. We are ready tonight. Who is presenting on this item? It takes 30 seconds and stretch.
She's putting up her other...
I will figure it out. We got too many things on the 13th. We got to figure out the calendar in the next few weeks. It's okay. Okay, are we ready? Well, for the lack of a presenter, I guess we'll... Go ahead. Good evening, of course.
Good evening. My name is Arwen Watt, and I am the project planner for P-11093, known as the Greenbrier Project. I will be providing a brief presentation on the project from the city, and the applicant will follow up with a more detailed presentation. City staff will be providing a project overview, which includes the project location, previous approvals for the site, the current proposal, the environmental process, and the currently requested entitlements. Then staff will wrap up our recommendation for the project and transition to the applicant team's presentation. Located at, the project is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Highway 9970 and Elkhorn Boulevard. Specifically, the project is south of Elkhorn Boulevard, west of Highway 99, north of Interstate 5, and east of Metro Air Park. In 2008, the city approved several layers of entitlements for the original Greenbrier Project, known as M-05-046 and P-05069. The primary entitlements included an environmental impact report and mitigation monitoring plan, a general plan amendment, a pre-zone, establishment of a plan unit development, airport land use commission override, a draft finance plan, inclusionary housing plan. Also included a reorganization, which included annexation and detachment, and a tax exchange The previous approved project included 2,991 dwelling units, 41 acres of parks, 30-acre habitat buffer, a 40-acre detention basin/lake, 288,000 square feet of commercial, including a six-acre retail and light rail station, 28 acres of freeway buffer with a bike pedestrian path, and a 10-acre school site. When comparing the original approval of the current proposal, you'll see that the overall proposal is very similar with approximately 31 acres of parks, approximately 30 acres of habitat buffer area, approximately 41 acres of detention basin and lake features, and approximately two-acre private community center site, approximately 30 acres of commercial, including seven acres for a retail and light rail station, approximately 27 acres of freeway buffer area with bike pedestrian path, and approximately 10 acres for a future elementary site. Now I will provide you with a brief overview of the environmental process. The... Excuse me. The environmental impact report was prepared and certified for the 2008 project approval. Sequel review was, is required for the current proposed entitlements. The city analyzed the currently proposed, current proposal for any new significant effects or for, and/or for significant new information. The city then completed and circulated an addendum to the EIR. The conservation strategy for the conservation of the 22 plant and animal species covered by the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan. Analysis of the effects of the project on these, on these 22 planned animal species covered by the NBHCP, also the conservation strategy measures and on the attainment of NBHCP's goals and objectives. The project applicant and city staff coordinated with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers at each step of analysis and documentation, which is included in the correspondence portion of your staff, of the staff report. The city circulated the following documents for public review on January 10, 2017. An addendum, the environmental checklist, a revised mitigation monitoring and reporting program, a conservation strategy, and effects analysis. The environmental review is a portion of the overall project review and entitlements before you today that includes an addendum to the final EIR and mitigation monitoring plan, a development agreement, a draft finance plan, a general plan amendment, a re-zone, amendments to the Greenbrier Plan Unit Develop, Unit Development Schematic Plan and Guidelines, a mixed-income housing strategy, and a tentative master parcel map. Specifically for only Phase 1 of the Greenbrier Development, which is located north of the future Meister Way, the applicant is requesting a tentative subdivision map, a tentative map design deviations, and site plan and design review with deviations for the map only. No house plans or buildings are being reviewed at this time. Subsequent application approval for site plan and design review will be required for the future development. Several documents have been provided since publishing of the staff report, including an environment, the, excuse me, a copy of the environmental checklist as an attachment to the resolution for the addendum to the EIR, additional correspondence on the project that was submitted to the city clerk's office, and also a subsequent document is provided today with a response to those comments. And the addition of following language to the development agreement under Exhibit L, special conditions, as a new item under heading 2, to be labeled Paragraph L, which would read, "The applicant voluntarily agrees to pay the County of Sacramento the amount of $120,000 upon the issuance of the first building permit to defray the costs of the construction of the 880 megahertz radio tower constructed by the county." And here is my wrap-up. Staff recommends the city council approve the project as amended. The applicant will now come up to provide you with more detailed presentation of their proposal.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. Tina Thomas, I'm here today on behalf of Integral Communities. Before I start my very brief presentation, because I do think that staff has covered it quite well, I did wanted to thank staff for all the work that they've done over, really a decade, so it's, we're finally getting here. But really, Arwen, and Teresa, and Samar, yeah, Samar's here, and John Dangberg, I wanted to thank all of them for all the hard work that they've put into this project. We've, we've, we've had some tough issues to tackle, and I really want to thank the councilwomen for being there with us because we had to address some pretty thorny issues related to the mixed-income housing plan and walkability and bikeability of the, of the site. The finance plan was pretty tricky. We had a lot of negotiations, the school district, and I want to thank you so much for giving us guidance on these issues and getting us to the point where a decade later we're ready to go. So, here we are on the first slide. I just wanted to very briefly point out, this is a 3,000-home project with a lot of different types of housing, including senior affordable. I think the key to this project all along has been that it is the final link on the green line to the airport, and that's why we are able to enjoy the support of a lot of the regional agencies for that reason. Again, it's walkable and bikeable and has a variety of different types of housing, including senior affordable. The entitlement history has been interesting, to say the least. The annexation was approved in 2007. The processing of that document or that approval took place, you know, over the three to four years prior to that. We prepared an environmental impact, the city prepared an environmental impact report jointly with LAFCO, and then in 2007, the annexation was approved, and in 2008, all of the land use, the first-tier land use entitlements were approved, so the, approved, and those were the general plan, the zoning, and the schematic plan for the PUD and PUD guidelines. We did not go forward with that, at that point, with either a development agreement or the tentative subdivision maps because we needed to have our approvals from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. The project got put on hold because of the moratorium and the recession, but Integral picked the project up, purchased the property in 2010, and began negotiating with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. In the meantime, we were litigating the adequacy of the EIR, and in 2012, the EIR was upheld by the Sacramento Superior Court. So fast forward to where we are today, like I said, roughly a decade later, we do have our biological opinion from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and we're ready to proceed with those second-tier entitlements, the subdivision map, and the development agreements. So, let's see. Do you want to go back one? Yeah. So as you can see, the, the plan on the left is the plan that was approved in 2008. The plan today, in 2017, is roughly the same. There's a few nuances that Drew Kuznick from Integral is going to discuss, but they're very, very similar, and for that reason, we prepared an addendum rather than pursuing a new environmental impact report. So, the, the project does enjoy the support of the regional agencies. LAFCO, as I said, approved the annexation. The air district has been very supportive of the project, as has RT and SACOG, and I believe that you'll hear from some of those people today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Drew Kuznick to talk about some of the details of the project, and we have members of our team here available to answer questions, should you have any.
Great. Good evening, mayor, council members. Thanks for having us tonight. As Tina says, it has been a long journey, but we're really excited to be here, and I think we've overcome a lot of hurdles and are bringing you a project today that has greatly improved since you last saw it in 2008. Overall, the project is 2,956 homes on a wide variety of housing types. Why don't we go to the next screen, Stan, and you can kind of point to things as I talk about them. So, within, within the community, you have a range of housing that goes from senior affordable housing on the multifamily site there on the east side of the site, to multifamily apartment sites for up to 300 apartment homes, then everything from small alley-loaded lots along Meister Way there and along the lakes that take advantage of the streetscape of an alley-loaded product and the viewshed and streetscape of the lakes as well. And those would be homes for first-time buyers, first-time families that are moving into the neighborhood, all the way up to move-up housing, up to 6,600 square foot lots over on the west side of the site, over here, a little bit farther. So we have a wide range that you could be moving in to an apartment as your first move out of your home, into your first home that you purchase, to your move-up home, and eventually to a senior affordable home, if that's where you end up. So, it's a nice mix of product that's gone all the way through, and we inherited the project when we bought it in 2010. One of the first things we did to sit down with Councilmember Ashby's office and say, "Look, this is our vision. This is where we think we can improve the plan that's been approved." She gave us her ideas on where it could be improved, and we've worked really, really well with her, with staff, to come up with the plan you see before you today. So overall, 2,956 units, five public parks, including a community park that would be programmed for regional sports as well, a school site onsite, a 10-acre school site next to an adjacent park, that we're working with the Twin River School District to see if we can make that a K-8 school, ideally, to serve the community, not just here, but in the neighboring communities around Greenbrier. 141 acres of open space, parks, and lakes within the community, including a lake walk that gives three and a half miles of walking trail on a 20-foot-wide band all the way around the lakes for an amenity for the project as well. And as Tina talked about, the transportation corridor, which is the purple line down the center of the site, right along Meister Way there, we're dedicating that corridor to RT, as well as making a contribution of $2.4 million towards the transit station that ultimately would be built there. And this is the last piece of right-of-way for the green line to connect from the airport to downtown. So along with that, we are also building the Meister Way Overcrossing, which will help service transportation around and to the airport, as well as some improvements along Elkhorn that will service the greater community as well. So we've come up with a lot of different plans for the site, really worked on with the councilperson's office to make it a better plan overall, and feel we've really reached that point tonight as we've worked through it. The project will be developed in two phases. Everything north of Meister will be Phase 1, and then we'll come back and do Phase 2, probably four to five years, four to six years, depending on absorption within the market after that. So we talked a little bit about those changes, so I can walk through those. As you can see, when you first visually look at it, we really tried to stay within the, the modified grid pattern that already existed in the approved plan, but revised various villages to make it more market-friendly. We decreased the density of the single-family homes to create some larger lots and some more move-up opportunities, but increased the density of the multifamily sites so we could have more of a transit-oriented development right around the transit station there. We added a new private community center that'll service all of the homeowners, both in the apartments and in the for-sale homes in the community. We'll have a couple pools, beach volleyball, it's right on the lake, right at the entrance. Be a great amenity for the community. We reconfigured the parks to bring them into, into accordance with the new ordinance today, and that created another benefit for the city. By taking our parks from 5 per thousand to three and a half per thousand, it means that a portion of the park fees that will be paid by the Greenbrier Project can now be freed up to be used elsewhere in the city and are targeted to be used for the regional park on the other side of I-5 or I-99 in North Natomas. So that freed up $4 million of park funds that can be used to complete that regional park. We also revised PUD guidelines in working with staff to really meet new citywide principles, part of the cleanup from some changes in general plan and guidelines since the original approvals. So talking about first, what are the community benefits? Obviously, we put a lot of amenities in the site plan to attract home buyers there, but there are community benefits that reach outside of Greenbrier's boundaries. As I mentioned, we're building the Meister Overcrossing, improvements to Elkhorn and the interchange. That's about $26 million of area-serving roadway that will help the community as a whole. Final segment of the green line right-of-way will be a great addition and help bring the density to the green line that will provide the ability for RT and others to go get federal funds to build the green line. We're contributing over $9 million in citywide park fees, again, that can be targeted to the North Natomas Regional Park. Our contribution to the light rail station, the elementary school onsite, we're committed to build that, I believe it's $27 million is our commitment on that, to build the school onsite. We're contributing $1.2 million to fire stations in other areas of North Natomas, providing the community park onsite, which will have regional sports programming and working with the city that can attract residents from all over Natomas, as well as funding a local transportation shuttle. And then overall, which will be a topic of conversation tonight, we're also dedicating for every one acre of development on Greenbrier, one acre of mitigation land within the basin for permanent open space, permanent preservation and habitat management. On-site, as I mentioned, 141 acres of parks. We ticked through most of those already. To give you a flavor for the community, the school site, the transit station, 94% of the homes here are within a half-mile walk of that transit station. You're going to be within eight or 10-minute commute to downtown. There's a master HOA that we agreed to, to make sure that all of the landscaping is maintained. Within the boundaries of Greenbrier, they will maintain all of that landscaping and keep it up to par. There's a 30-acre regional community center that we will track some retail for eventually as the rooftops come in, that'll service beyond just Greenbrier's borders. And then the, it's actually seven acres, including the park and ride. Two acres of it are actually for a retail center near the transit corridor to service the transit users ultimate. So with that, I really wrap up my, my presentation tonight. We're happy to take any questions from council, some things from the audience, but I can't do that without thanking staff as well for everything that they have done for us. Thanks to all you guys, it's been a long road. Everybody worked really hard, and thanks again to the council members who have given us input, and particularly Councilperson Ashby.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. I'm going to turn it over next, before the public comment, to a person who led us through to this point tonight, Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, mayor. I am interested in the public comment. The clerk has given me the nod that there are about eight of you signed up to speak, and I want to make sure we hear from you. There are probably also some people who are following this online, because we did get a number of emails, my colleagues got a number of emails, to say that this project or this piece of land was challenging, as Tina stated in the beginning, is probably the understatement of a lifetime. It started in a, you know, building moratorium on a piece of land that was challenged from the very beginning. So, I came into the project at the same exact time as Drew. We actually, he bought the property and I won the council seat, so we didn't have history. We kind of came in and, and tried to turn it into something that we thought would be good for the community. And when we come back after the comments, I will go through all the ways that I think this project is improved. Drew has hit many of them. We're going to hear probably a lot tonight from folks in the habitat conservation component, but I'm asking you to bear in mind that these same conversations happened around the school, the transit component, the parks component, the inclusionary housing component, the retail component, the size of the land, the type of homes, the mixed-use, the apartment complexes, the community center, and the addition of the HOA have all been negotiated over the last five to six years to get us to a place that is a much, in my opinion, much, much better project. When you look at the two maps side by side, there are lots of things you can't tell, but people who follow development, one thing I'll tell you, there's no T-cords. There were T-cords on here. Drew and I immediately got rid of those. That's the type of thing that people in the city, you know, don't, don't like anymore, and people in Natomas are adamantly opposed to. As to the habitat component, where many of my colleagues have received emails, there are many thank yous that need to go out to folks that are some who are here and some who are not, but for the last couple of weeks, under the help of Stacy McKinley, there have been two groups meeting, the applicant, Drew's group, and folks from the environmental communities, ECOS, the Sierra Club, and Friends of the Swainson Hawk. Those folks have been working hard to come to an agreement about how to handle this habitat conservation component in a way that is responsible and really furthers what the commitment has always been from Natomas, North Natomas, since its inception. And there is still some work to be done on that effort, but we have codified it in agreement, which is why this item was moved on the agenda, because the ink wasn't quite dry yet on that deal. But I want to specifically thank Drew, Nick Avdis, Tina Thomas, Stacy McKinley, Mayor Fargo, who is in the room and has been quite helpful on this project, Jim and Jude, and Sean Wright, all of whom are from Friends of the Swainson Hawk, Sierra Club, and ECOS. It is a better project now because of their input, and it will be even better 30 days out, as you will probably hear in this, in these conditions, which I will read at the end after we've heard comments, but to my colleagues who have been sort of watching this and wanting to know where we would land, I believe that we have a resolution, thanks to the mayor's help and, you know, we worked together on this today, that we have been able to pull together with these parties. Stacy's done a lot of hard work to get us there, that I believe satisfies the needs moving forward and allows us an opportunity to do a little bit better even in the days to come. So maybe we take public comment now, and then we'll come back and... So maybe we take public comment now and then we'll come back and I will make, if my colleagues will allow, I will make a recommendation moving forward and a motion, and we can actually vote on it tonight. And I will read something into the record and place it up on the overhead so that you all can see it. I apologize for not getting it to you in advance, but I got it about 20 minutes ago.
Off the press, yeah.
Yeah. So I think, Mayor, that probably frames it well enough for us to move into public comments.
Very well. I just wanted, yeah, thank you very much. I wanted our colleagues to know the work you've done with the stakeholders today that leads us to, hopefully, the public comment will be in that context as well.
Thank you.
Good.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, so we will call three at a time. We will start with Heather Fargo, and that will be followed by Noah Painter, and then Peter Titishi, Robert Copeland, and Rob Fong.
Mayor Fargo, welcome to your chambers. Councilmember Hanson reminds us, weren't you mayor when this project was first approved?
Yes. Yes, this project was approved in 2008, and that was my final year as mayor, so yes, I was. I was also on the City Council in 1997 when the Natomas Basin Conservancy was established, as were you.
With you.
Right? So it's been going now, first of all, I should stop. Thank you for asking me the question. Hello, Mayor Steinberg and honorable councilmembers, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. This is a project which is near and dear to my heart, something I worked on for a very long time and felt the need to come and speak with you about this evening. I hope you all got my letter, which expressed my concerns, and so I'm not going to go over all of those. I was in a conversation, in fact, I've been here at City Hall since 2:30, I was in the conversation that the environmental communities negotiated with Councilwoman Ashby and Mayor Steinberg and the developers of Greenbrier, so you'll hear more about that later, I guess. That's not my news to share. But I do want to make sure you recognize, you talked a lot about in the last item, agenda item, about the amenities that the convention center offers to the city, and I hope that at some point you will agree that the Natomas Basin Conservancy and the 4,130 acres of habitat in Natomas is also considered a city amenity. I certainly think it is. And so I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about it. And I'm concerned about it because while in 2008, when we approved this project, the EIR clearly identified Natomas Basin Conservancy as the organization that would handle habitat for the Greenbrier Habitat mitigation. The addendum before you tonight would change that. And I think that you need to, as Jeff Harris said recently, use the term unintended consequences. I think you need to think about that very clearly, very carefully. I believe that if an organization other than the Natomas Basin Conservancy is selected, you could end up weakening the Natomas Basin Conservancy and making it a less effective organization. It needs your love and support, just like the convention center and our auditorium. And I really hope that you will help Greenbrier and the Natomas Basin Conservancy come to an agreement so that NBC can in fact be that provider. That's really, I think that it would set a bad precedent to do otherwise, and it would be a precedent that I'm sure that Sutter County developers and future Sacramento County developers would love to take advantage of. You cannot do less than what the NBC does, and I hope you will support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, Noah.
Hi, Mayor, Council, Noah Painter, on behalf of IBW Local 340. We're asking you this evening to support the project. We believe that this project's been on the books for a little over a decade, a lot of planning, a lot of agencies involved. The project's going to create a little over 1,100 construction jobs, develop 3,000 homes, and generate about $12 million in housing trust funds, much-needed housing trust funds that are going to be used throughout the city. I want to be short and sweet and just ask that you support the project this evening. It's a great project for our community and will complete the green line that we all want to use to go to the airport. Thank you.
Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Peter Titishi, on behalf of the Sacramento Metro Chamber, here to support the project today. This is an important project that we've been waiting for a very long time in the business community. It adds necessary housing and mixed-use housing to our region, and it actually helps us complete some important commercial corridors and transit corridors for us as we look to expand the metro airpark. And as we look to actually have economic development spurred through the airport itself, we need to have that green line, and this is an important piece to getting us that green line. Additionally, we look at this as something that our partners are supporting in the sense that we work very closely with SECOG, with the Air Quality District, with the Regional Transit. When we go back to cap to cap every year, we work on priorities together, and we see that we're coming together on this through this project. And so we absolutely want and encourage all of you to support this project tonight so that we can continue to grow our region appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter.
Okay, Robert Copeland, and then Rob Fong, and then Kirk Troost, and Scott Dosick.
Well, I have a few questions about this project. What happens if light rail doesn't expand to the airport? Then what's the transportation going to be like, public transportation? Anybody ever thought of that? I remember, as the Gashby said, part of her, it doesn't have a bus system. Is that still true? So while we go through this part, some of this part I do like, but some I have a question on. And I don't know enough about the habitat part to even comment on that part, except one question, is any animal or plant species threatened because of this project? I think the public needs to know that. Thank you.
Mr. Fong.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, esteemed council, city manager, master clerk. Rob Fong, I formerly used to work here at City Hall. Before I get started, I just wanted to say publicly, surely, congratulations. Amazing career. I am thrilled for you, and it was great sitting with you for eight years. So congratulations on a wonderful career in serving the great city of Sacramento. So 2008-
Are there nice words?
You know, Darryl.
Sorry.
I love you like a stepbrother. And you know that I do. So I got to vote for this project back in 2008, when Drew was, the part of Drew was being played by Angela Skoplis, right? I was on LAFCO when we approved the annexation, and I'm here today to speak again in favor of the project. Today, I stand before you as a consultant who works for and consults with Local 447, the plumbers and pipe fitters, and they expressly asked me to say that they are absolutely supportive of the project and are looking forward to doing work on it. So thank you for your consideration, and it's nice to be with you tonight.
Be with you too.
I should not have to follow that. Kirk Troost, on behalf of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, happy to be here tonight, Mayor, members of the council, to address you. As you know, back in 2004, the region adopted the Sacramento Region Blueprint, and we appreciate the partnership of the city of Sacramento in implementing that blueprint. You have been one of our great partners through that effort over the last 12 years. This project is another project that comes before you that's consistent with the blueprint so that this region can reach its transit and mobility goals, its air quality goals, and its greenhouse gas reduction goals. One of the important transit pieces in our blueprint, as well as in our metropolitan transportation plan and our sustainable community strategy, is the green line to the airport. And this is a project that will also help bring that project to reality by providing the ridership, the mixed uses in that area, so that we can achieve that goal for the region as well. So we urge you to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Thank you very much.
Okay, Scott. Following Scott is Judith Lamar and then Lorraine Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Good to see you all. My name is Scott Dosick. I'm a North Natomas resident. I'm here today as a private citizen, and I'm here in strong support of this project. I first learned of this project when I was serving on the North Natomas TMA as a member and as its president, and was really intrigued by this project because as anyone who's known me for more than a few years knows, I've been a longtime advocate for the green line and recognized that this project is absolutely vital to the fulfillment of the green line. There are thousands, tens of thousands of Natomas residents who bought their homes in Natomas, moved to North Natomas with the expectation of a green line being built. I think the original promise was 2010, and then it was 2020. So we're still looking for the fulfillment of that promise, and this is a vital piece of making sure that that promise does get fulfilled. So very excited about that. But I'm also here to speak on behalf of what I've seen Integral doing and stepping up since they took over this project. While I'm here as a private citizen today, I will say that even before I started, became a school board member in Natomas, I was approached by Integral saying, what can we do to get involved? What can we do to get involved in the community to help support some vital causes? They have been title sponsors of both the gala that we put on at Intercom High School for the International Baccalaureate Program since before we even started that program, as well as our Safe and Sober Grad Night at Intercom High. And as a result of their sponsorship and others this year, we had hundreds of kids that were able to spend the night safely at Dave and Buster's. I heard it was a pretty fun evening, almost as fun as being here. And so have really seen them step up and be a vital partner and look forward to seeing this project and its fulfillment and seeing the green line come through. I urge your eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Judith Lamar. I'm here tonight representing the Friends of the Swainson Hawk. I'm also a member of Habitat 2020. You know, the city has always been a leader for habitat and wildlife in Natomas Basin since 1997, and that's been a good thing. We've been concerned about the Greenbrier project and what changes that might mean because it's a new conservation program. And we have seen what looked like key conservation decisions being turned over to consultants, attorneys, state and federal agencies that we felt were really the cities. So tonight, I am happy to support the council member and the mayor in a renewed effort to address the conservation issue from the city point of view. And we'll certainly put everything we can to support that, and we believe that this issue deserves the care and concern of the council, and you have a lot at stake out in the Natomas Basin. FOSH has always been very, very grateful to the Natomas Basin Conservancy for their careful work, their very high-quality conservation program, and it's made a difference for Swainson Hawks in the Natomas Basin. So this is a rare species in a rare area. It's a showplace, and we're committed to work with the applicant to help their conservation programs succeed. We're committed to working with the city. Let's, Natomas Basin is a showplace for wildlife, habitat and agriculture, so let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is Lorraine here, or did Lorraine leave? I don't see Lorraine. Okay, so that's it.
Very good. Seeing no additional questions from members of the council, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Ashby. Or, excuse me, we do have Councilmember Harris first, if that's okay.
You want to talk before me, or you want to hear this proposal first? It's okay, whichever thing you'd like to do.
Why don't we hear the proposal first in case questions are... So why don't we go with Councilmember Ashby here?
I asked Kevin Green from my team to put this exhibit up on the display for you all. These are not my words, nor are they the mayor's words. These are the words selected through the mediation process that has been going on for the last couple of weeks. And yes, there's some handwritten scribble in there because, as I told you, the ink wasn't quite dry until about 20 minutes ago or so. I'm going to read this, but before I do, I'd like to say just a couple of things and then make a motion. While these things have been stated, it is important, I think, that they are reflected in the record. We had project objectives for this, and by "we" I mean the region, and you can narrow that in. My role on this dais is to make sure that District One gets the type of project that they want, and that inside of that, the city of Sacramento meets their goals. It is not a surprise to anyone, we are in a housing crisis in Sacramento, and this is the largest housing project that will come before us in the near-term future that we can look to, that has a mixed component, everything from senior affordable to move-up housing. By the way, housing anywhere along the spectrum helps us, even move-up housing, because when people move, it opens the houses below. So all of these components are helpful to us, but it's worth running through these objectives that are being met by this project. We created a quality residential development near a major employment center and near downtown and near the metro airpark. This is only three freeway exits from the downtown urban core. That's important to note because it does help us with those SECOG goals. You've heard that we hit the SECOG goals. You've heard how important this is to light rail and the downtown Natomas Airport line. For the person who asked about transit in Natomas, one of the reasons that it's lacking is rooftops, and so this is an important component to be able to get those services out there more. The more we do this, the better we can do in serving people, which we need to do. It does check the box of working with the International Airport on their comprehensive land use plan. The design promotes using various modes of transportation. You heard Drew go into this in depth, but we added a lot of bike components, and they are working with the Transportation Association, although it's worth pointing out because she is in the room, that North Natomas TMA would like an enhanced opportunity to speak with you all moving forward, and I know you've already agreed to do that. But Becky Heick, thank you for being here tonight, and you heard Mr. Dosick talk about that as well. That will help us with walking programs, these mixed-use trails, meaning you can ride a bike, you can walk on them, you can jog on them. This project is full of them. They go around the lake, they connect to the school site, to the park sites, to the community center site. It does become an HOA under this project, which is a homeowners association. That helps us maintain a standard that folks in this part of the city are incredibly accustomed to. It will help with the landscaping, with the safety, with the standard of living for everyone in, everyone in there, from the mixed use all the way through. It also creates a HOA facility center, which Drew described to you as very cool. It'll have pools and the volleyball and the community center, which is important for these neighborhoods to have their gathering spaces where we can create community, where they can do all the things they need to do. The school district component to this was quite difficult. Twin Rivers is the school district for this site, which can be challenging in Natomas because Natomas is split up, and there aren't enough school sites for Twin Rivers to serve the families that live in Natomas. So one thing that we have worked with Basavalkara, our Twin Rivers representative on, is to make this a K through eight site. That is not a vote that the school board has taken yet, but it is the adopted position of our school board representative and is under consideration by the superintendent there, and it is supported by this development group, which is an important component because there is no middle school for kids in Natomas who go to Twin Rivers, and it becomes a bit of a logistics problem. This makes efficient use of development opportunities because of the bordered three sides by existing planned urban development. That is very helpful and does address the blueprint and SECOG goals and our own general plan update vision and guiding principles are adopted. There is also a component in this project that, from a cost perspective and a timing perspective, help us to bring public services on in a timely fashion. Things like when the road is built out are determined based on when we need fire to be able to access portions of the property. City manager's office helped with a lot of that. A lot of study has gone into where the funding will go in this project to make sure that the city provides the amenities as they become needed. Some of you who have followed Natomas know that this has been a bit of a chase in other parts of the region where, say, a fire station was needed, and they were over on their timeframe in terms of when fire, how quickly fire could get to them. This project addresses that in its timing for build-out, as well as police access, access to the parks and the other components we have really learned from and built on this, an important timeline that helps us get where we need. So all of that being said, I'm going to make a motion to move forward staff's recommendation tonight with this change, and I'm going to read it into the record. This is referred to as Exhibit A. It should become part of the motion. Condition one is that the applicant shall fully comply with the terms and conditions of all federal, state or regional permits, including but not limited to those issued by the Army Corps of Engineers, US Fish and Wildlife, which is USFWS, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, CDFW, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board at the Times and in the Man- at the times and in the manners required thereby, which shall include the USFWS and CDFW approval of mitigation lands' conveyance, plan operator, and determined and funded endowment. All liens and taxes shall be removed or paid prior to the conveyance of any of the easements or title to mitigation lands. In the event that USFWS agrees that a third-party operator may accept a fee title, fee title for any or all of the mitigation properties shall be conveyed in lieu of a conservation easement. Condition two, by June 15, 2017, the District One City Council member and the Greenbrier applicant shall appoint a neutral third-party negotiator to convene discussions between the Greenbrier applicant and the Natomas Basin Conservancy, including the TNBC Board, Staff, and Technical Advisory Committee to explore mutually acceptable options for the Natomas Basin Conservancy to own and manage the Greenbrier mitigation properties. The negotiator shall report back to the District One Council member and the Greenbrier applicant by June 30, 2017, or later as mutually agreed upon by both parties to report on the status of negotiations. If the parties have not come to an agreement, the matter will be referred to the Sacramento City Council within 30 days for its public hearing and a recommendation to the wildlife agencies. The applicant may solicit proposals from qualified land operators, including the Natomas Basin Conservancy, for Phase One mitigation properties. The same procedures and timeframe shall be followed for the selection of a conservation operator for Phase Two mitigation properties. Final selection of the third-party operator shall be subject to approval by the United States Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The clerk, I have provided the mayor with a copy of that language for you to include in the official motion. And again, I want to thank all the parties and particularly former Mayor Fargo for helping us advance this project and giving us an opportunity here to take an additional 30 days to see if we can do even better. John Roberts is in the room. Hopefully, you felt us light the fire under your feet there as I read those items. We're going to need your help in the next 30 days to sharpen your pencil and see if you can help us find a way to engage the Basin Conservancy, along with Drew, who's been very gracious in allowing us an opportunity to see this all the way through and see what we can do to preserve what we're doing, the good work we're doing out there with the Basin Conservancy. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashby, Condition Two is really clear as well as the first part of Condition One. Could you break that second paragraph down for us in sort of like English?
Sure, the liens and tax component. This is about fee title.
Okay, what is it saying?
This is what you're talking about. Tina, do you want to just walk him through it?
Yes, there was an issue about whether or not mitigation lands would be conveyed in fee title or via an easement. And there was a preference on behalf of the environmental groups that we were working with that they would prefer fee title. And so we agreed to that, but it's the handwritten language is qualified that the final approval has to be by the service.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll second Councilwoman Ashby's motion. Actually, I should have gone before you because I have very little to say, and you've pretty well covered it all. But I had two concerns with Greenbrier. One is that it was a quality project. Certainly, as the councilwoman alluded to, we have a real crisis in terms of dwelling units in Sacramento, and this is manifested by our increasingly rising rental rates and scarcity of properties. It is a real problem, and this project will help us with that. The way to move forward and to lessen rental rates is to just create more inventory. We've needed it for a long time. The recession caused us to build very few units for about six years, and now we're in the choke point and a real squeeze play. This project will help us move through a difficult period, and it can be affected in a fairly short timeframe. My other concern was that the species would be adequately protected, that the conservation plan was substantial and workable, and I think through the negotiations today, you know, the parties are reasonably satisfied, that a way forward has been found that can probably satisfy the needs of all the parties concerned. So as a result, I'm in definite support of the project.
Thank you. A final thank you to all the parties. It's just amazing that this is the culmination of almost 10 years or longer, and to think about all the people hours that go into something like this that will end up with a very important positive result for our city for the reasons that both councilmembers Ashby and Harris stated. We need more housing, and the fact that this can facilitate light rail to the airport potentially is just an added bonus. I just want to say thank you, and thank you to Aunt Jaleek. I watched her up close these last couple of days and today itself, and never give up, never give in, got it done. So congratulations and thank you. All right? Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? This is getting boring, another nine to nothing vote. Thank you very much. Excellent. We do have council comments. Are there council comments? Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, you may have gotten an email, all of you, but I want to invite any of you who are interested to join me for Sacramento Pride this weekend. As per usual, we'll have our fire truck with room for all of you on it. I'm very thankful this year to have been named a grand marshal, so you can kind of join us and have fun with that. Also, we'll be having some very special pride shirts. I thought they would be here by today, so I could give you each one, but if you show up to our contingent, you will get one of our commemorative honorary Sacramento City Pride shirts for 2017. The other thing is, we've been working for a couple of years on Lavender Heights, and as you know, we added rainbow crosswalks at 20th and K. And I'd like to ask the city staff to work with my office to designate the blocks between 19th and 21st and J and L to be officially called Lavender Heights for the purposes of the city and recognition of the historic contributions of the LGBT community here. So that's it for me. See you all Saturday.
Excellent. Look forward to Saturday. Steve, can't wait. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of announcements. Tomorrow night, we're doing, I'm doing an open house, office hours from 5:30 to 6:30 in Colonial Heights at the Public House Theater. And then from 6:30 to 7:30 at Track Seven, we're supporting hopefully the formation of a neighborhood group at North City Farms. That'll be at Track Seven, 6:30 to 7:30. On Thursday night at 6 o'clock at the Southland Park Neighborhood Association meeting at Bell College Library, we're going to talk about a cultivation site that is looking to move into the neighborhood and has applied for a conditional use permit. And then Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m., we have a cleanup at the Del Rio Trails. It's at 9:00 a.m. I'm not exactly sure where along the trail we'll be starting, but if people are interested, they can call my office and we should have that information.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to first thank all our city departments who came out for the Tahoe Park Town Hall and had the resource fair to answer any questions people may have from our front street shelter to water meters, to public safety, to all the different things our Parks Department does. Had a great turnout there. Another Parks Open House that's going to be happening throughout the city at different community centers, but in District Six, we're going to have the Parks Open House this Saturday, June 3, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Coloma Community Center. So after Pride, you can swing out there and check it out before they close. Also, early in the morning, the First LEGO Robotics Exposition will be happening at 9:00 a.m. This is an after-school program we started with our elementary schools in District Six to encourage after-school robotics at the CERNIS Center, and that's going to happen from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And we're going to be showcasing all of the different projects that our youth were doing with the after-school robotics program. And then finally, save the date for June 15, 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the Napenthe Town Hall out in the Napenthe Clubhouse at the in-campus Commons Community to answer any questions you may have about issues related to traffic, related to water meters, any of the city issues coming up. Thanks with that, Mr. Mayor, and look forward to seeing everyone also at Pride.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to piggyback on Councilmember Harris' announcement about the Department of Parks and Rec Open House. We'll also have an iteration of that at South Natomas Community Center, 2921 Truxell Road. There'll be dance, yoga, zumba, youth sports, fashion camp, showbiz, soccer, music games, bounce house, craft, face painters, food trucks, and more. I'm not sure how much more you can put in there. The same day, the Historic Fire Station Four will have an open house. That's Saturday, June 3, again from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. That's at 3145 Granada Way, right behind Safeway off Alhambra Boulevard. And then if you haven't had enough fun going to the Pride Parade and the open houses and the fire station, come down to Pops in the Park. Our first concert is this Saturday, June 3. It's at East Portal Park, starts at 6:00 p.m., goes to 9:00 p.m. Music by Joy and Madness, and they are a seriously funky, danceable band. They're an awful lot of fun. I suggest you come down. It's free, free and open to the public, and there will be a beer and wine garden and a lot of people having fun and having a picnic. One last comment. Mr. City Manager, can you please ascertain that the Airbnb ordinance is on the lawn ledge log? I asked for that quite a while ago, but I'm not sure it made it onto the log, but that does need to come back for further work.
Seriously Funkable. That's good. Okay. Vice Mayor Jennings.
So Councilmember Harris, I am committed to coming to Pops in the Park to see Seriously Funkable as long as I know that you're going to play in the band.
Not in this concert, but probably the last show of the season I will.
Okay, all right. You got my commitment either way. Either way, I'm coming, so that's good. Couple of announcements on Friday, June 2, Trucks and Such is going to happen in District Seven and District Eight. That's the Valley High portion of our district. It's going to take place at Hike Park from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's going to be bounce houses and music and food and all different kinds of activities. So this is a great way to get to know our neighbors and friends in the neighborhood. If you have any questions about this event, call my office at 808-7007. But come on out, just have a great time with getting to know your neighbors, eating some good food, and watching the kids have lots and lots of fun. And then on Saturday, June 3, the Dragon Dash, which is a 5K run and walk for all you runners and walkers who want to get involved, is going to take place at Zachariah Park at 8:30 a.m. So you can get your run and your walk out of the way and still have the rest of the day all to yourself. Doesn't get any better than that. This is the Didion Elementary School 5K Fun Run and Walk. And notice I said "fun," so you don't have to be real serious about it. If you want to come out and run in your high heels, you can do that. If you want to come out and run in your bare feet, you can do that as well, right? Bring my heels. So it's a fun run. They're going to run through the greenbelt. The starting point will be Zachariah Park and through the greenbelt, over the Florin Road Bridge, and then back, and the proceeds will go to the middle school Catalina trip. So now here's the deal. If you can't walk or run, and you just, it doesn't work for you, and you can't get there that day, you can do the next best thing. You can just donate money for the Catalina trip, right? So I'm confident each one of you will take advantage of that. And then finally, the Matayama delegation wanted me to give my regards to each and every one of you for an incredible time. Twenty-six delegates showed up from Matayama, Japan. They had a great time. I told them they would be tired, but I told them they would enjoy themselves, and when they left here, they were tired and they thoroughly enjoyed themselves. So lots of pictures on all of our social media sites. If you'd like to get firsthand view, I've got them on my camera, and that's all I got.
Point of clarification for the vice mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Which council district is Zachariah Park in, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Zachariah Park? What, we share it, right?
No, we don't.
Right, we do. We share.
Which district is that in?
Yeah, we share it.
It's in Council District Four.
It's kind of like, we share Hike Park.
And I just want to say thank you for your leadership on Matayama. You put a lot of heart into it, a lot of time and energy.
You did.
And you really showed them the best of Sacramento, so thank you for your work on that, Mr. Vice.
Thank you. Thirty-five-year relationship with Matayama, Japan, and the oldest one that we have of any of our sister cities. So they thoroughly enjoyed themselves. Mayor Noshi met Mayor Steinberg, and I think they're going to become good friends. We're going to go back there for the 2020 Olympics.
Our mayor is practicing his Japanese. I heard him muttering something earlier.
So I'll close with arigato.
Arigato. That's about it.
I did see that schedule, Rick.
Councilman Carr.
That was some schedule that you had those, that group on.
Your recommendation?
Oh, so did I.
Do what?
Your recommendation.
Can't follow Rick when he's here. This Sunday, 9:30, the Filipino Festival will start. If you haven't been there, this is a big event. The Filipino community is one of the largest in Sacramento, and they put on a fest at the Jose Rizal Community Center at 7320 Florin Mall Drive. Now, they start the fest off with the parade, so if you want to get in the parade and walk down and wave to people, everyone on the council is invited to do that, and then afterwards they have a fest. You will not believe the bands, the food, the things that they have to do at the Filipino festival. It's a big-time deal. It's one of the largest festivals that I've seen. And then Sunday afternoon, that's going to be Sunday morning at 9:30 is the start. And then Sunday afternoon at 5, we're having our first Park Day. It's going to be at Meadowview Park, 76 Sixth Day, 24th Street. Of course, there's going to be live music, and the music will cover a wide range of genres. There's going to be soul, there's going to be some hip-hop, there's going to be some old school, so come out and enjoy that with the games and the info that's going to be at Meadowview Park, starting at 5:00 p.m. on Sunday, the 4th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Ashby.
I too like it better when Councilmember Carr does the impersonation of Councilmember Jennings for the announcements. I think that's very effective.
You missed out, Rick. It was fantastic. Okay. So in District One, we do a Summer of Fun, which is a series of a whole lot of things. Some of you have participated in portions of that in the past. This weekend, we kick that off. So Friday night, we do a First Friday event. It is the first Friday of every summer month. We basically throw a party in the regional park. We have a band and a beer garden with Track Seven and vendors and food trucks and, and, and. It's a lot of fun. You're all welcome to come. That is this coming Friday from 5:00 to 8:00. And then on Saturday morning, we'll kick off the Natomas Farmer's Market out at the Farmer's Market site, out at the, Mayor, you visited there, out at the regional park. That is a big deal. And we will also kick off Yoga in the Park this Saturday. That starts at 9:00 a.m. So you can come out and do yoga in the park and then go over to the Farmer's Market and pick up your fresh veggies. And if that's not enough working out for you for one weekend, on Sunday, I will be at the Kaiser Women's Festival downtown, so don't be alarmed on Sunday morning when you see like a few thousand women running downtown. It's the Kaiser Women's Festival. That's this Sunday, and it starts at 7:30 in the morning. That's a good one. I'm sure there's still ability to register for ladies and guys. You can come out and cheer them on if you'd like. And then some of you, Councilmember Carr and Harris for sure, have been to movie nights in Natomas before. I don't know if any of them, maybe Councilmember Warren, but they're kind of a big deal. We get a lot of people. Our first one is next Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday, and it is Moana. And if any of you want to come out and be a part of that, you are more than welcome to do so. So that just happens when the sun goes down. We'll show Moana in the regional park, and it'll be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last but not least, Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, sir. Just one event. I want to announce the Fourth Annual Sacramento Taco Festival, of which Mayor, last year you attended. It will be this coming Saturday on Del Paso Boulevard, starting at 11:00 a.m. It slips my mind, though, we have a very, very prominent and highly-regarded entertainer, and I just sent my staff a text. I don't know his name. I wish I did, but there's going to be a press release, I believe, Thursday. I wish I did, but there's going to be a press release, I believe, Thursday about the event, and we're expecting about 10,000 people to show up. So as... When we first announced it, Steve Kohn, I believe, was sitting next to me, and I said this was the first taco festival in the city of Sacramento's history. And Councilman Kohn said, you know, I've been here for quite a while, and I think there was another one, but no one has ever told me about a taco festival that existed prior to the one that we started in District Two. So we're very proud of the fourth year. Hopefully, you guys will find some time to come out and celebrate. Thank you.
These announcements, to me, are very interesting because it just demonstrates all the activity going on in the city. I mean, it's just incredible in all the districts. Makes me proud. Nothing else? Come before the city council. We're adjourned.